Kevin, the one cubic yard, that's supposed to be in the one cubic yard at the transfer station.
Yeah, there's no financial impact there. We're not.
So it's not?
Glennis and I talked about it, and we even came up with a way to make it work.
You don't reduce the revenue?
I think it's, yeah, four, five thousand, six thousand. Glennis and I talked about it. We'll bring it up tonight.
He wants to, yeah.
Glennis has a figure for that.
He wants to definitely make the amendment that puts it into the fee schedule.
Is that one taken?
No, doesn't have to be in the fee schedule. I think what we would propose is that seniors can pick it up when they pass this down.
Well, yeah, it's one cubic yard for any resident.
Any resident?
Any resident.
That comes to pick one up at the city hall.
Right, so if Bill wants a cubic yard, cubic yard, goes down to finance, goes in some identification and says he's a Saco resident, he gets a cubic yard.
I'm asking you to sit here, take notes.
Okay. Oh, Kevin and John, okay.
Do you want me to move down there?
I find, I use to do that with our construction. You are? Yeah, because I need more Ryan Summer when he gets here.
You want to go on the outside of path? Outside of path, sure?
It will be. Ryan, Ryan Summer and Ryan with Eric.
Hello. I'd like to call this workshop to order. First of all, I want to point out that this is a workshop. It is not a meeting. There'll be no attendance taken of the council. There are no motions, there are no votes, there are no public hearings, and there's a lot of material to cover for the council. So if you wish to be heard, I'd like to remind you that there are budget question sheets in the back of the room and also on the city's website. And additionally, you can contact your individual counselor. And then, if you want to be more broad than that, you can send an email that will be received by the council, every member of the council and the mayor, by emailing council@socomaine.org. If you will join the council in the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a couple of people who've indicated they want to speak in public comment. That would be Mr. Harkins and Mr. Roach. Are there any others who would like to speak in public comment before I first introduce? Well, let me see. Is there a member of the school board that would like to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, you do, okay. So first, I didn't, I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't see you. So first, we'll have Mr. Steve Shimon, who will talk about the school board, and then Mr. John Harkins. So.
I believe that the members of the council received a note from Garrett Abrahamson, our chairperson, about a 10-year lease on 10,000 square feet of space for eight classrooms up to, can be used, could be done up to 10 classrooms, that is currently being used as a space that is currently being used for preschool use. So it comes outfitted, ready to use, and there was a vote after a executive session to support the superintendent signing a lease, and as is our, within our, what we do. And it was unanimous in the group. And the main reason is because of what it does for the children of the town. It provides about at least 145 children opportunity, whether we have 145 next year, I'm not sure, but it provides substantial space and flexibility in the future into how we use school space in general. It also provides possible income in, for the programs with students in the special ed program, and it had so many pluses. It was a little longer than we had originally envisioned as a five, five-year lease. It's a 10-year lease, and it does involve a 2% increase in future years. Next year's budget is not affected by what we did, what we did. And we think it's the right thing to do for the children of the town, and it was responsible. The other major thing that came up in the meeting was the hiring of a new middle school principal. His name is Ken Hawkins, and it was done in a different way than perhaps in the past. We had members of the school board involved, we had members, a member or members of the city council involved, we had parents involved, we had community involved, and of course, the superintendent and administration. So it was attempted to be as broad as possible in a situation where we know that we've had difficulties, and we think that we've got a good man to do it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hawkins?
Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Harkins, for Christopher Terrace, Saco. Last Monday, I was here suggesting $900,000 cut for the school board, as well as the administration. Having looked at the budget again, I believe, with the exception of those negotiated positions increases, which are somewhat alarming, I'd say a zero base budget, no increase. The town needs a breather. When you have, in four years, 27 positions added to this town, and proposed in this budget, 18 positions, something is drastically out of control. We've been playing with musical financial chairs for quite some time. Error upon error upon error has surfaced. We can't go on like this. If you keep buying into a budget that's, whatever increase it is, this one is not consistent with the directive of the council. It's more than a 1.9%. Therefore, I feel at this point in time, regrettably, I must suggest that the top-level management in this community be excused. That includes chief finance officer, the human resource director, and the city administrator. There's been a lot of problems created among this trio, and it's costing the taxpayers money, a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Just a second, let me start the three-minute timer.
The timer.
Now, this is only, this is only advisory, is to say that when you hear the buzzer, you should be wrapping up.
Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. I don't know if I really, what to speak about, because Joe, John Q. Public, like myself, has no idea what the, supposedly what the deal, what the costs are and what the setup is of this pre-K.
Oh, pre-K.
Yeah. So how did we get here? Parents like myself were advertised back in January that the pre-K is expanding, with no plan, it seemed, that the young school plan was in the budget. So instead, we're going with, hey, it's all about the kids. I mean, I didn't say anything yet, because I want to make sure those kids get their pre-K. But I'm here to congratulate the location that they were able to score $30 a square foot. Now, us in the business community, we'd love to, love to lease out something close to 12, maybe 15, 30. I mean, just fantastic. I have, I'm sure I want to celebrate with that owner. That's going to be, hopefully, fantastic news for the rest of us, but not exactly good news for, for our taxpayers. Correct, it's in this year's budget. But what they didn't count, what they are counting, that doesn't count the future years, is the capex that was budgeted into the young school. After year one, two through 10, you probably total up to about $2 million of extra lease costs. The state does not reimburse you based on what you decided to pay for this cost, okay? The state reimburses you based on square footage, okay? So just so there's a number understanding, and also a point of process, okay? This is a lease, then there's a question, but I believe it's a lease to buy. What gives the superintendent, the public works director, the parks and rec director, the right to enter into a lease to purchase on a building that, you know, it's assessed, you know, for, I think, under a million, it's not going to be assessed for a little bit more if you're getting $30 a square foot? Is that, is that allowed? I mean, I mean, again, if so, I'd get every department head to put in some requests and sign some contracts. That's all I got, I'll listen for the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Well, the rest is next, and so that is the last of the public comment. We move now to Mr. Sutherland. We're, we're to get an update on the, on Saco's assessed value from Mr. Nicholas DeJardin, who was unable because of prior commitment to make it this evening. So do you have an update on the city's assessed value?
I do.
Okay, you're on.
The light on my microphone is out, but the microphone is on.
All right.
Nick and I spoke, yeah, Nick is at a conference this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so unfortunately, he's not able to be here tonight. On the mill rate calculator, we had a valuation increase of $36 million. Nick and I spoke, this number will likely be closer to 50 million, so I think as part of the conversation with the mill rate calculator, we can use 50 million and feel comfortable about that number.
Okay, Counselor Roach, I'm sorry, Counselor Doyle. So just, I understand we're using that for the purposes, that valuation increase. Has there been a revalue of people's homes?
No.
No. So that is essentially new construction?
Maybe some tweaking of some of the industrial components of our community. The challenge that our assessment department faces right now is more about having just finally had full staff.
Sure.
And the training and time to get us to a place where we can right-size the market to our assessed value. It's not going to happen in time for the next, what's the term, obligation or commitment?
Commitment. So this, this 50 million, so folks that, if the mill rate goes up, they're not going to see a valuation increase and a mill rate in the same year?
No. They might see some, there might be a few small neighborhoods that have some small changes, but we are not seeing a major.
What do we see, what do we mean by small? Because small is a, is a relative term to some folks.
I don't know if Nick's going to be able to get to all of those, so I don't, I would say that 50 million, I'd say 42 million of that is new lumber, and maybe $8 million worth of new value within the city. On $2.3 billion, it's a very small amount.
Thank you. Any other questions to my right? Anything to my left? My question is, are we still at 86% valuation according to the Secretary of State?
Yes. So homestead exemptions will not be at $20,000.
Right.
We're going to have to factor, and we have to factor next year anyway, regardless, because we were below where we should have been last year. Even with those increases we did to the market, we're not enough for the state to come back and say we were above 91.
That will be a decision by the Secretary of State's office?
Correct.
Since we are below their threshold, that the homestead exemption will be less than 20,000. Counselor Doyle? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought two years ago during the budget process, we right-sized our problem that we had with being under the 90, what is it, 92 to 100, I'm sorry, 91 to 113%?
110.
What's that?
110. 91 to 110.
So I thought we, we right-sized that two years ago in the budget, when everyone had their, their valuation spike.
Yep. We fixed the property challenge, but now you still have, the market is still so hot that we can't even keep up with it at this stage. So two years ago, we tried to fix it, last year, we tried to fix it to some extent as well. This year, we just have not had the staff, with the retirement of the former assessor, bringing on the new assessor, staff moving around to, you know, our position moved over to Bedford, we have been behind in making sure that we follow up. So this year, assessed values will not, most likely not change for every one of our residents, and we will fall further behind where the market is. So next year, we're going to be in a position where we're going to have to look to make some modifications and, and bring those numbers back up.
And we are one of the faster-growing cities in the state, perhaps the fastest-growing, and that puts some pressure, particularly if there are children in the household, which causes the mill rate to rise because people don't live in a house that is valued at, near, anywhere near 100% of what it costs for one child to be in the school system. Anything else, Counselor Doyle?
No, thank you.
Anybody, any, any other counselors to my right? No? To my left? Yes, Counselor Smart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, is, is the difference between what the state reimburses us for the, for the homestead exemptions and what we have to bear factored into the budget?
I'm going to turn to Glennis on that. I'm not sure if we budget for it or if it's part of the valuation that the assessor does, the homestead exemption reimbursement.
The homestead exemption reimbursement is considered part of the mill rate, so it doesn't offset or adjust the mill rate in any way. It's combined, along with the Betty reimbursement, with the, with the mill rate held against the property valuation in the city, and that altogether creates your mill rate.
So I believe that's called the assessor's overlay. So the assessor identifies how much money isn't going to be coming in, and that would be included in the, that assessor's overlay, I believe.
Some portion of it makes up the overlay, but, I mean, our homestead reimbursement's close to a million, so a lot of it's going in against the commitment portion.
So a change in the amount that we have to pay out won't change the mill rate or any, any numbers on our calculator here? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Copeland?
Just a quick question. So if people aren't getting the full $20,000 homestead exemption, is that going to raise their taxes? Are people going to have to write larger checks?
It's, what's that? No, what the, the difference is a small amount, I mean, it's a couple hundred-dollar difference in terms of, so your, your exemption is reducing your assessed value from, we'll call it, we'll start with $200,000 home. If we were at, if we were between the 91 and 110% of market, that home would receive, and that's their primary resident, they would receive $20,000 worth of a reduction on their tax, on their assessed value. So their home would be worth-
So the difference between the 86 and the 91 is just a couple hundred dollars in valuation?
Yes. So it goes from, it'll go from 20,000, they'll see a bill, it might be 19.2 or 19.4.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to my left? My right again? No? Well, I guess that satisfies the, the question on what the change in the assessed value is. I was hoping for larger change in assessed value, actually, but it is what it is. So the next item on our agenda is a discussion of, of capital policy. And let me take a look and see what we have for, for anything there. I've got what is likely to be one motion, but I think it's two motions on Monday's So let me start off with, on Monday's agenda, there's going to be a motion on adopting the amended fee schedule, and this is merely to put it onto the floor, not to make amendments to it, which will be open after it's been, after a motion has been made and seconded. So I'll just go down alphabetically and say, Counselor Archer, are you willing to make the motion to put the amended fee schedule on the, on the floor for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so Counselor Archer is first. The second item will be the adoption of the fiscal year water resource recovery department budget. So Counselor Gay, are you willing to make that as a motion? And that doesn't, that doesn't require that you put on or not put on any amendments to it, it's just that you're putting it on the floor. And then, we're up to the capital improvement program policy. And, and so I guess that this is part of this discussion, where in order to facilitate the development of a dedicated capital projects fund to house the capital improvement plan and to clean up other language that's outdated or no longer relevant, the finance director working with senior staff has revised the capital improvement policy. Counselor Doyle, would you be willing to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And is there any discussion, Mr. Sutherland, for the council to understand on that, on that particular motion? We're, we're on equivalent to, we're at C in the 20, on the, I'm sorry, May 13th agenda.
Yeah.
Where we're also talking about item B in tonight's workshop.
Okay, so the, the, Glennis and I had presented to council a few weeks back.
Right.
The idea of revising this as part of our discussion around the capital program and creating the capital improvement fund. And in your packet, we included language from our auditor about why this is a good idea, why this makes sense. Again, it's not, we're not making anything less transparent, we're actually trying to make it more transparent and move what has been known as assigned fund balances into a special account so that we have more control over it, and we aren't carrying assigned fund balances from year to year.
Okay, this is not going to make tracking or any particular expenditure within the capital plan more difficult?
Not at all.
Okay. So Counselor Doyle is still, you remember getting that in, we will receive that in our packet for Monday, which should go out tomorrow after we get this to Torrey. Okay, thank you. I think the, the next item, before moving to a discussion on the fee schedule, the next item would be adopting the FY 2020 to FY 2024 capital program. So would you be willing to put that on the floor, Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Copeland will be putting that on the floor. Do you have any, or do any counselors have any questions associated with the, the capital program? Counselor Copeland?
I understand that it was the auditor's request, and I understand that, that it's a good thing to do, but I do have just a couple of questions. Is it in coordination with the comprehensive plan and council's objectives? Was that reconciled to make sure that we're spending in the ways that we've all decided that we should be spending?
Yeah, Defer to Director Fox, he's been the chair of the capital plan committee and can probably delve into some of those questions.
And that was one of my other questions. Who, who's on that committee?
Oh, and Director Fox chairs that committee, and he knows all of their names. So Patrick?
So each, each department has a representative, and then the council liaison is Counselor from Ward to Roger Gay. Alan Menthorn's attended a lot of the meetings as well. We haven't met that much this year. We, we kind of put forth sort of a status quo spending, and it, you know, the recommended budget does actually show a reduction in some of our annual funding of the different cost categories. But we do try to stick to the asset management plan that was put together a few years ago. It would be nice to be able to put more time into making that more robust, but trying to keep up with all of these projects is taxing staff. But it basically sets sustainable funding levels, so we took all of our assets and put lifecycle costs to them, and those are our funding targets each year. So it's mostly has to, it has a lot more to do with our existing infrastructure than it does growth of infrastructure. So if you look to, say, the, some of the plans you referenced, those are a lot about where we want to grow our assets. All of the capital plan to date has been just to try to keep up with the stuff we already have. So it has, say, sidewalk, sewer, drainage replacement, but not where we want to expand. Those costs aren't factored in.
Okay. So this doesn't have anything other than what we already have?
This is just purely if our facilities last 50 years, you'd have to put this much into your facilities to keep up with that 50-year cycle.
Okay.
And just quickly, when I was on the council last, streets were looked at as having a 10-year life, and now they're at 12?
Yeah, 12 is, 12 is our, is our target for some sort of treatment, yeah.
Right. So any other, oh, Counselor Copeland?
Why is the WWRD separated out of that?
They're an enterprise fund.
Right. We, we also have a lot of projects, a lot of the taxes.
Okay, thank you.
We look at the infrastructure in the same way, but it's funded separately, so you just don't see it when we're going through the municipal budget.
Right. Right. They, they are able to charge for their services separately, and so the capital expenses associated with that are included in the rate they charge to the, the customers of Saco.
But there are some other departments that charge for their services, and the clerk, rec-
Um, to some extent, but not to the same extent that, whereas in Water Recovery, and wait, yeah, Water Recovery, Water Resource Recovery, I got it right?
Yeah.
And, um, they actually take 100% of their costs, divide it by their billing rate, uh, or, I mean, divide it by the number of customers and come up with their billing rate, and that's not how the clerk calculates their cost, or the rec people calculate their cost, et cetera.
Good. Thank you for helping me understand that.
Or, or PD calculates what the cost of a parking ticket is, or...
I believe it's section six in the book is wastewater recovery, and section three is our capital.
Right. Okay, section, yeah, so they're in entirely different section, too, but. Any other questions to my left? Any questions to my right? So we have somebody to make the motion, and we, uh, to start dealing with the capital program.
Sorry, it's section seven, that's wastewater.
And seven is wastewater.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, next up for discussion on the agenda is the fee schedule. So there's, we have somebody who will be making the fee schedule motion. Uh, you received the fee schedule some, a few weeks ago, and I reminded you, um, a week ago Monday, that, how time flies, that, that would be covered tonight. So, any questions on the fee schedule? Yes, Counselor Copeland?
I do have some questions on the fee schedule.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the mooring fees. I went around to different websites and different cities and how they did it, and we're charging 137. Wells Beach is at 250. Um, and other cities are way above that, but I think that, that's very low, and would be very happy to have it at least at 150.
So that certainly can be an amendment on Monday, but, Mr. Sutherland, do you want to address how you calculated the mooring fee during the workshop, uh, so that when Counselor Copeland makes a motion to amend the fee schedule, she'll have some idea how the orig, the number was originally derived?
I believe the number was a lot lower a year ago, and they were modified to, um, follow inflation for some time. Uh, and I would agree with, I'd support that. Um, and in fact, I'd actually support any of those numbers that are, um, on a weird dollar amount. So if somebody's paying with cash, it's not 37, it's 40, or...
Right. And another one I saw was the mooring application fee for the city clerk was only $10. I mean, I can't imagine that we can process anything for $10. I don't see why that can't be $20.
Michelle is pretty effective, but-
Yes.
Do you wa, do you wish to address that?
She's not a miracle maker.
Uh, Ms. Hughes?
Well, actually, it's the harbor master who goes through the application and does all the inspections.
Oh, uh, would you speak into the microphone, please?
It says clerk's office on my sheet here. I apologize.
It's actually the harbor master that, um, goes and does all the inspections and stuff. The only thing that the clerk's office does is we take the application-
Right.
-from the individuals.
Right, and that, we're charging $10 for that, and I think that we should charge 20. Okay. Do you know what it costs to do a transaction? Is, do we have that number?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, 20 would be in line, though, with the liquor license application fees.
Okay.
So there's, there's just another amendment?
All right.
20 is in line with the liquor application fee.
And I think the boat launching fee that we have is 14, should go down to 10 so that people don't, families can go out on a boat without having to pay more.
Yours to amend.
And I think that the non-resident parking permit per week, it should not be $10, but 25.
Okay, uh, just a second. Um, so, uh, Ms. Sells, you're taking notes on the like-
I can email this to you.
Okay, if you ha, yeah, if you have them written down, that would be great.
I do. It's all, it's all in my PDF here.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then I think that the non-resident parking permit for the month should not be 65, but 75. I don't know why we're being so kind to them. I do know why, and I'm only just being funny.
And Mr. Panero, this is all being recorded so we can go back and figure out what, um, Counselor Copeland's looking for as an amendment.
I have the PDF I can send to you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments associated with the fee schedule to my left? Ah, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I also may have some amendments, but I will-
But later, yeah, you'll have them by Monday?
If I don't have them by Monday, we can amend it at any point during the year, but I'm-
Yes, that's true.
I'm gonna aim for Monday, and if they're not there, then we won't address them, but...
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we'll, there will be more, and so may various will see that by email. Any to my right? And I see a, a bevy of hands. Okay, first we'll start with Counselor Archer, who is faster to races than than Counselor Gay was.
Uh, so I didn't actually hear, uh, when-
Oh.
-Counselor Copeland mentioned the mooring fees of other towns. Do you, I didn't hear the number.
She had well, she quoted Wells's.
Wells was 250. I have a-
And were less. It's, with, and this is the cabin. Would some of the other towns or cities and municipalities have higher costs because they pay a full-time harbor master, where we don't pay a full-time, so we don't charge as much because we don't have the high cost? Or is it something else, maybe?
That's a good assumption, um, but I don't know if that's an accurate response. Maybe Pat can answer.
Um, I, I would just add that, uh, over the years, uh, the fees related to the harbor and river really haven't been touched as much during this process, because they sort of resided under the coastal waters. They were going in a reserve account, weren't directly tied to the mill rate. So I, I really think it is a conversation worth addressing, whether it's right now or during this year, because I'm not sure there's been a lot of cost comparisons like there have with other city fees that affect the mill rate, so...
No, I, I agree. I think that Counselor Copeland, uh, taking the time and effort to look up a couple of other nearby coastal communities, um, is a, is an appropriate measure, and I don't remember any of the counselors, when I served on the council, bringing that up. So I think that was very good. Um, one of the things we might look at is what Biddeford is charging, too, because it's the same era.
I could not find that online, believe it or not.
I, it's probably because it's a secret, and they charge special.
I looked very diligently.
Counselor Copeland?
Okay, and then Counselor Gay?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see one free cubic yard come back for all citizens of Saco, and I would like to see the taxpayers at least get something free for their money for the city of Saco.
Okay, so we have that as an amendment to the fee schedule, that there'll be a, one free cubic yard, and whatever adjustment needs to be made to the budget should be included in the motion that's prepared for Counselor Gay to make. Kevin? And Counselor Doyle? Oh, excuse me. Are you done, Counselor Gay? Counselor Doyle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to go back to the, the, the mooring issue, um, and, and I'd like to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Archer was saying. Uh, do we know what the mill rate is for Wells? And is it lower than ours? Because what, what I'd like to look at and balance is, if you're paying more in fees, you're taking in more revenue, therefore you don't have to tax the city as hard, or tax the residents as much. So if they're paying more in fees, maybe they're not paying a higher, uh, tax rate. Uh, and what I don't want us to do is hit the tax rate and then hit again with those folks that want to, uh, go down and, and use the services. So, uh, when we look at these fees, I'm not opposed to looking at the fees, because, uh, things go up over time with inflation, but, uh, we really want to make sure that we, we're, we're taking care of our residents, and that, you know...
Yeah, in fact, it's a good point. There might be a non-resident fee for mooring and a resident fee for mooring, as a possibility. Counselor Copeland?
Um, I think that's very smart, and that we should do that, but, um, at this point, I'm just requesting going from 137 to 150.
Thank you. Additional questions to my right, or comments to my right? Any additional to my left? So, we're gonna have another exciting fee schedule discussion, uh, in four days. Uh, next on the agenda, um, we're dealing with, um, well, let's deal first with, uh, a motion to bring to the floor the city operations' main motion. So, uh, that would be Counselor Menthorn?
Yeah.
Are you agreeable to that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, and then individuals will be making motions associated with amending the city operations budget. Um, and that would be, um, and I would ask that, if you haven't already, and Counselor Doyle has made a submission of some of the motions he wants in, as part of the amendments to the main motion, um, I would just ask that if Counselor Doyle, Counselor Gay, or Counselor Archer, or any other counselor has additional, if you can send that in so that it can be typed up, uh, to use an old term. Uh, the, uh, we're looking forward to that.
Do you want to review?
So, uh, we all set with making amendments to the main motion on the city operations budget. It looks like, yes. Now, adoption of the budget, so we would, so my question is for Mr. Sutherland. We would close the main motion for the budget and have a separate motion for adoption, or do we keep the main motion open and use the adoption of the budget as an amendment to that main motion?
You make a motion to rec, uh, approve the recommended budget, and then there are amendments to that. So-
Yes.
-once we're done with the amendments, you close with a-
So we're just, we close with that. So there's no-
With the amendments that have been approved by the council.
So under, so two under E does not require an additional motion.
Nope.
Nope, thank you. And so, next, um, I guess we're still on the main budget. So the next is the school budget appropriations order, and that would be Counselor Smart. Are you agreeable to making that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So that puts it on the table, and again, those with motions to be made associated with the school budget, if you can get them in before, before Monday sometime, preferably before noon, um, but in, by then, so that-
Hopefully, we're discussing them this evening and can draft some things to provide-
Okay, so does anyone, I haven't received any particular, uh, information on, uh, on school budget motions. Does anyone to my right have, want to bring up a school budget motion? Seeing none. Counselors to my left? Seeing none. Don't see anything. So then that is the same thing. Whoever makes an amendment would make their own amendment. It would be seconded. Uh, there's no motion to adopt the budget. We would just close the, uh, that item, um, uh, and, and then vote on it. Um, the school budget appropriations order number two. So would you differentiate order number one from order number two from order number three, please?
Uh, yes, certainly. So the first order is approval of the school budget in its entirety, as well as approval of the state mandated city appropriation. So the state mandated city appropriation is about two-thirds of the actual total city appropriation required to fund the school budget in whole. Um, however, based on feedback from the school, we do have to approve that separately. So the order one is the full school budget, which is why we're gonna make amendments, if there are any, to the school budget as part of that main motion, plus the state-required city portion. The second order is the amount of city appropriation required to fund the full school budget that's above the state required minimum. And then the third order of appropriation is for adult ed. So that one's pretty straightforward.
Okay, uh, so, again, the first is the entire school budget plus the state mandated portion, the, for the city. Order number two is, again?
Uh, the portion of the city appropriation that is beyond the state mandated minimum. So that's about an additional third.
And the third order is?
Adult education.
Oh, adult ed, right, thanks. What can I say? Have to be trained every year. Um, sir?
You think for the public, instead of calling item eight, school budget appropriation order three, we just call it school budget for adult ed?
Yes, I, can we word it that way? Change the wording?
Simplify it.
Tomorrow, okay, yeah. And so if we can change the wording on all three of them, so that, uh, order number two becomes the, um, the man, uh, the city appropriation beyond the mandate, and, uh, and then order one is the city appropriation included as the Okay, any questions on that to my right? Any to my left? Any comments at all? Wow, okay. I'm gonna go with, what, 60 minutes on Monday's meeting? We just go like that? Phew. Okay, um, so, appropriations motions, discussion of additional- Okay, so, um, the next is the final adoption of a municipal budget, and as I understand it-
What do you want?
-that's the combining of everything so that the council can see what the mill rate calculator looks like with everything added in, presumably including the county. Is that true? Mr. Sutherland?
So the- Try this one, okay.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Panero's right next to you, so-
It's not him, it's the little light that's on here. It's gone.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's not, it's not him, it's me.
Always trying to take the blame.
So, so the point of this is, we were just trying to, uh, have conversations about the different budgets first, before seeing the final. Council, as char, as required by charter, has to make a final vote on essentially the, uh, tax levy amount. So that'll be that 40-
Right. So that will be the capital budget, it'll be the municipal operations budget, it will be the school budget, and will it be the county budget? Because I understand from Counselor Archer, the county budget committee has wrapped up. Oh, there's a public hearing?
That is correct. It wrapped up yet, last night, uh, two weeks is the public hearing at the Alfred, um, that-
Okay, so, yeah, so this is to everybody out there?
Yes.
Two weeks from yesterday, there will be a public hearing on the county budget that will be, that will affect all 29 towns, and it will be held at the County Government Building, which is, um, the old, the new old jailhouse, and, um, and everyone is welcome. So-
So, and, and the estimated amount for Saco, tax bill is 1.25 million, so-
So-
Estimated, it can change because we haven't finalized the process, but it's a good estimate to use as of right now.
So after the public hearing, the following Wednesday is the final vote for the county budget committee, and then it, um, gets distributed by the county manager, where the county commissioners have to sign, each sign 29 letters. So, yes, ma'am?
Yes, and just to provide some clarity on the county budget, because we do sort of have to approve the municipal budget before the county budget gets approved, the county appropriation is separate from the municipal appropriation in the, uh, tax rate calculator that the assessor uses to submit, uh, the appropriation to the state. So if the county tax were to come in lower than what we're budgeting for, then the taxpayers of Saco will pay less. So that will be, any savings that come in, or incremental costs, will be realized by the taxpayers prior to the final tax commitment in July.
Okay, so the motion, which falls to Counselor Johnston, do you wish to do that one? Is, that's the total municipal budget, which consists of totaling the capital budget, the municipal operations budget, and the school budget?
Yes.
And you will make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
For a lot of money. Yes, sir, Counselor Smart?
So does that mean I'm doing F, G, and H?
Oh, excuse me, uh, yeah, I'm-
Which I'm fine with. I just wanted to clarify.
That's my question.
So, I skipped a little bit there, didn't I? Um, are you willing to do F, G, and H?
Sure.
Let's do F, G, and H. So that's Counselor Smart for the school budget, both, I mean, including order- both, I mean, including orders one, two, and three. Councilor Johnston does the final. And then we get to the 2020 property tax due date and interest rates. Councilor Archer, that's a pro forma. You gotta do every year. And Councilor Gay, to confirm the authority to apply any payments made to the oldest taxes. So that if somebody owes from last year, they make a payment, goes to last year's taxes before it goes to this year's taxes.
Yes, sir.
So, Councilor Archer?
Yeah, I'm just looking at clarification on when we get to the item I, the final adoption of municipal budget.
Yes.
If we've already approved the city operation budget, and we've already approved the school budget, and we did the mandate, and we did the adult ed, how the final... We can still make amendments at that time along...
Yes, yeah, that's exactly right. So, if you look at the bottom line, and the mill rate is going up by some number that...
And because they've already voted and approved it, do we have to then rescind it?
I'm sorry, no.
That would require more...
It would be a new... It's a new item on the floor.
Okay.
And so, if you didn't like an item you put on the floor in a previous motion, we aren't looking so much for a motion to reconsider as we're just looking for a new motion on this item that's on the floor.
But you can't bring up on the floor items of similar value?
Okay.
That was my concern before.
So, do we take up the total at all? Do we just show it? Here's what the total is. No motion?
Again, it's just for clarification. I have no...
Because we have covered... By that time, we will have covered the three points.
For summarization, which in the past has been the bottom-line budget.
I think you can say that.
Okay. So, just to provide clarification, in the past, the appropriated budget that's approved by council is the expense budget at the departmental level. That's sort of our bottom line when we're looking to hit departmental... When we're looking to hit our budget totals at the end of the year. That departmental-level budget appropriation was part of the city operations budget motion in the past, even though the language of the motion itself was specifically for city operations. It include language about, and this is the budget as appropriated by council. And then, in a supplemental exhibit, had all departments. So, somewhere, we have to make a motion on that departmental-level budget because that's the city council budget. The question is, the reason we had broken it separate is because we're going to do the city operations and amendments first. Then we're doing the school. The summarization of the departmental level includes the school appropriation. So, by doing it third, now you have... Now, you don't have to go backwards. But I don't know if you were to amend on that motion, if you have to go back to the city operations motion?
Yes, because it's on the same meeting.
Yeah.
So, I approve a certain amount for the city.
It's actually a... It is a separate item. So, what...
Yes, they're separate.
This final motion is, is the sum total of all the budgets. And the sum total of all the budgets is different than an examination of only the capital plan, or only the city operations plan, or only the school order number one, or the school order number two or three.
But how can you make an amendment, even though it's a separate item? If we approve, I'll just throw something, Plan A. I don't even want to identify because that could give me trouble. So, Plan A, we say we want it.
Yeah.
The council has stated they want it. You can't then countmand it later on in the meeting without that a person from the opposing, or the prevailing party withdraws. So, I'm seeing it as item I is you can't make amendments. We can approve saying we have now accepted this amount, but you can't make amendments that far in the stage.
Unless it's actually...
Unless it's not.
I mean, would it be... Could you recall the original city operations motion to the floor if you wanted to go backwards? I would say that would be the better...
If prevailing party withdraws, or... And then it has to be voted on to bring it back onto the floor.
I think that's cleaner, to be honest, because then we'll... Otherwise, if someone were to make amendments on the summarization motion that weren't made on the original city operations motion, we have two motions in conflict in the same evening. Because the city operations will have different subtotals than the summarization.
You have a suggestion, Councilor Johnston?
Oh, yeah. How about we just don't amend it? I mean...
We just don't amend it?
Yeah. If everybody's comfortable with the cities, and then they're comfortable with the schools, all you're really doing is approving the combined number.
Just approving the combined number. So, we don't...
So, I understand.
Don't pass it unless you're confident in it.
We won't accept amendments.
Right.
No amendments can be made to that.
It's more of formality, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm looking for consensus. Does anyone object to item...
I.
Item I, as a rule, for item I, for this time, no amendments will be made. It's a... It's an up or down vote. Is that acceptable to... Is there any... Is there any... That's right. Is there any objection to my left? Is there any objection to my right? So, that will be a rule for Monday, is item I will not... An amendment will be out of order. Thank you. Unless somebody gets me with some part of Robert's rules that that doesn't agree with. So, we're all the way down through to the... Basically, the end of the meeting in which there'll be motions. So, going back to today's agenda.
Well, you still have J and K to assign.
Oh, well, Archer is... Counselor Archer is J, and Counselor Gay is K.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Okay, Gay. All right. So, are we all set and can go back? Can I... Going to go back to the agenda for the ninth? The review of prepared motions on the budget. So, there have been some prepared motions on the budget. And they are... They were in the packet. And there was 50-some-odd of them. I... Let me just...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a few slides we'd like to share with council and the public about sort of the process.
Oh, yes, I have a printout of that, too, so... That's actually part of item D on... In tonight's agenda.
Yes, thank you, okay. So, in preparation for... And of course, now it decides to stop working on me. Yes, it should be in the packet, okay. So...
Page 36 of your packet.
Okay, so, feedback that we received from the council last year, as well as actually senior staff, was a request to have the opportunity to vote up or down on all of the RADS, rather than pulling RADS ad hoc from the approved budget. And then, another piece of feedback was that the motions are really confusing. What does a yes vote mean? What does a no vote mean? So, in order to try and mitigate the confusion on the actual night of budget approval, first of all, we went through and did prepare all of the motions for you to review in your packets for this evening's workshop. So, hopefully, having read through those motions, will give you a better sense of what we're going into on Monday night. The second piece was that we sort of developed this process, and I wish it looked simpler, but this is the process. And essentially, it's a process we went through last year, so perhaps you can see how we got confused because we hadn't walked through it. So, I'm going to kind of walk through sort of what the process would be. So, the main motion, as we've discussed, is to approve the city administrator's budget as recommended. And then, within the city administrator's budget, there was basically two groups of RADS. There are the RADS that were approved as part of the budget. And then there are the RADS that were not approved as part of the budget, or which came up sort of later on in the process. So, we're going to start after the main motion. The first set of amendments that are in your packet are to consider an approved RAD. So, whoever takes the motion will be sort of putting forward a motion to approve the RAD. And then council will have the opportunity to either vote yes, which will keep the RAD in the budget, or to vote no. A no vote on an approved RAD will then trigger a second motion. And that second motion will either be to remove an approved RAD completely. And if there are counselors that wish to remove approved RADS from the budget, it would be great to get that feedback as part of tonight's conversation because, right now, I don't know if that's something that any counselors are considering. But if I know ahead of time, I can have the motions prepared so that you can read them ahead of time. The other option is to modify a RAD. So, in the case that the counselor wishes to remove an approved RAD, a yes vote now removes the RAD from the budget, and a no vote keeps the RAD in the budget. In the case that the counselor wishes to make a modification to the RAD, a yes vote will change the budget, whether it's an increase or a decrease on the RAD. And a no vote leaves the RAD the same. So, this cycle is going to continue through all of the approved RADS. Then, after we've gotten through all of the approved RADS, we'll consider the RADS that weren't approved. Now, RADS that weren't approved are a little bit more straightforward. If you vote yes on a RAD that wasn't approved by the city administrator, you will be adding that RAD to the budget. And if you vote no, then the budget will stay the same. The next type of amendment is other changes. So, possibly, if there are changes you would like to discuss tonight, we can talk about that. And again, these changes could increase or decrease the existing budget, but a yes vote will change the budget in some way. And a no vote will leave the budget the same. And then, finally, we have prepared a template so the US City Council can make amendments on the floor. By default, it's just at the departmental level because that's simpler. And again, with those amendments made on the floor, a yes vote will change the budget, whether it's an increase or a decrease, it depends on the amendment. And a no vote will leave the budget the same. Having gone through all of these RADS and other changes, we're going to come back up to the main motion. And we'll be approving the city administrator's budget as amended. So, all of these RADS will filter into back to the main motion. And then, we already talked about this. We'll have the school budget. There will be a main motion of approval. Then there will be... And then the city council is free to put forward amendments by cost center. And then there will be final approval on the school budget. And then, we'll come down to that final budget approval, which we just discussed. So, we'll just approve the budget with all updated numbers, no amendments to the final budget approval. In the packet that you received, I did prepare a bunch of motions so that you could at least get a sense of what we were looking at. So, the prepared motions in your packet are the main motion to approve the city administrator's budget. Then there are motions to consider the approved RADS. And all of those motions start the same way. The background is, I want to put forward this particular RAD for consideration by council. And then, I vote to approve the RAD in line with the city administrator's budget. That's basically the language. And then, I also prepared the amendments to consider all the other RADS. So, we can go through those one at a time and assign a council resource. Then, the other piece for consideration is just to say... To give you, the council, the opportunity to say, is anyone interested in removing some of the approved RADS? Is anyone interested in modifying approved RADS? And is anyone interested in putting forward other changes to the budget? And if we can have that conversation tonight, then I can have those motions prepared for the packet. And the more motions that are prepared and written ahead of time, I think the smoother it'll be because everyone gets a chance to read it this weekend. So, with that, are there any questions?
So, any questions to my right? No, seeing none to my left? There doesn't... Does not appear to be any question. So, as complicated as that looked, the council understood everything that was said.
We can definitely have printouts of this for everyone's desk if you want it Monday night. It's... I know it's kind of weird-looking, but at least we talked about it. Okay, so, we've already talked about the agenda. Do you want to go through each of the motions and assign a council resource at this point?
Yeah. Find out if there are additional changes.
Okay.
So, that would be starting at page 46 in the packet?
Well, the packets of Word, PDF, I can't put the council resource in it.
Oh, you... Yeah, but we're on the screen.
44?
I was just going to go down the mill rate calculator.
Is it in order, same as your... So, we included in your packet, starting on page 42, is the adoption of the municipal budget. And we've already discussed that Counselor Johnson will be reading that as a council resource. So, if you jump to 44, that's where we start identifying each of the different changes to the budget or RADS that are included as part of this. So, that's the first RAD that's identified that was included as part of the budget. And now, the question is, do we have a council resource for it? And if there's further conversation about this RAD? And we'd just like to go down and through these so we can fill this information in.
Okay, so, where we left off? We're at page 44 in the packet. And it is a... An amendment to the fiscal year budget. And the amendment is to put forward a RAD... Excuse me here. Titled 1.1% increase for non-union employees for consideration by council. So, Counselor Doyle is next. Would you be willing to do that motion? No. No. Counselor Copeland, would you be willing to make the motion to approve $41,205 in ongoing expense to fund a 1.1% increase for non-union employees as recommended by the city administrator?
Can I ask questions about it?
Absolutely, no, I... Yeah, there's no automatic yes on this.
So, is this bringing them up to 3%?
Yes.
I'll do it.
Yes. So, Counselor Copeland, page 44.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, please.
That may be helpful to the council. If a council member is willing to just bring this RAD to the floor and make the motion that supports it, they don't have to vote to support it necessarily, right?
Not necessarily, but it's council custom and practice.
Okay, all right.
Counselors don't make a motion that they themselves oppose.
Plus, you can't speak against it if you put it on the floor. So, you may vote no, but you can't speak if you're against it. So, you become silent.
So, there you go. Then, so let me start again here. Be it ordered that the council approve... The next motion is be it ordered the council approve a shift from the grants and project specialist to the communications coordinator in the amount of $43,500. And that is put forward the RAD titled Headcount Shift From Grants And Project Specialist to Communications Coordinator. I would guess that's a no for you?
No.
Okay. So, Counselor Minteron, would you be willing to make that motion?
I think it's a no for me.
Okay, Counselor Smart?
I'll make it, but I have a question.
Okay. So, Counselor Johnston will make the motion?
Sorry to jump out of order, but...
Yeah, no, that's all right. No, we're looking for somebody. I'm skipping over people because they don't want to. So, please, ask your question.
So, the question I had, and I sent this to the administrator, was... I can support the position, but I'd like to clarify that we're paying for the position from the franchise fees. I don't know if it's needed as a budget amendment, but I just want it clarified somewhere so that it's understood by the public that the position is paid for for franchise fees versus the mill rate. versus the mill rate.
Currently, all of our franchise fees fall to the general fund bottom line. So it's just a revenue within.
It has its own account. Couldn't we just pay that position from that account?
Would it make sense to then have it as a separate?
Maybe it's not a budget amendment, but I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, and that's something I'd like to think about from an accounting perspective.
Clarify for you guys how it gets dispersed.
Well, it is, though, essentially from the general fund. I mean, it's, it's, there's no special, I mean, the, the revenue fund is a, in the general fund is a revenue fund that collects the fees that Michelle collects, that collects, the fees associated with the, the parking tickets, et cetera. They'll go into the, into that fund. And for example, though there's an expense associated with the parking control officer, that still comes out of the general fund.
Yeah, I mean, so aside from the technical question of whether we can do salaries out of a revenue account.
Maybe it's a policy.
Yeah.
We're just wanting to use the cable franchise fee money for a specific thing.
Position.
Opposed to it dumps into the general fund. And then we say, well, yeah, it covers it, but there's no straight line between.
We're looking for a total on what we would collect from that, from the cable franchise fees.
Yeah.
And then not, and then essentially publish that from those cable franchise fees, the following expenses will be paid. And one, one of those expenses to be paid, it's not, it's not an earmark, it's not an earmark, it's just all out of the general fund, but it's a separate tabulation where you say, this is the total for cable franchise fees, and then we pay out of it this position and other positions. Is that possible to be done?
I mean, we can certainly annotate that in the budget book. Essentially, what we're talking about is rather, essentially, it's a reduction of the city administrator's budget and then an equal reduction of local revenue, which offsets the tax rate.
That's the intent.
At this point, there's, at this point, there's no requirement that the funds be used to offset a position. So the, the alternative mechanism is a special revenue fund, but then we would be looking at having to put all of that revenue into special revenue fund, which would be a significant loss, right? Because this communications person's $41,000 versus $250,000 that's coming in from cable franchise. So we could certainly annotate in the budget book that we're intending with this position to make better use of our cable franchise fees and possibly put it as offsetting the city administrator's budget.
Okay. Satisfy you?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not the one doing the.
As long as you're happy to make the motion, that's what I'm.
You can add that to the motion if you'd like, so that way there's some public, okay.
Okay, oh, great, add it to the motion, that's very good. The next item up is associated with $13,343 in one-time expenses requested by the clerk.
Oh, I'll do that.
Because of the presidential primary, and my first skip was Counselor Doyle. Counselor Doyle is willing to make the motion, that's on page forty-six, and that is that request from the, from the city clerk.
Before we move too far forward, are there any council members interested in making a motion in opposition to any of the RADS that we've covered so far? Just so that I can have the motion prepared ahead of time.
Well, I was, let's stick with what we have and make positive motions and see if it gets voted down before we look for the subsidiary motion?
Then I have it written ahead of time. Otherwise, we have to write it on the floor. Yeah.
There very well could be somebody that's willing to make a negative.
If it gets voted down.
That's right. Then we'll be looking for a new motion.
So I would rather know that someone might be interested in making a counter motion and just have the motion ready to go as opposed to, because otherwise, I'm going to have to write it on the floor and print it, and that's a lot of running around.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that you create a motion, an alternative motion, voting it down without asking each counselor to predispose themselves to an actual vote that isn't happening.
I actually think if the main motion, if that primary motion gets voted down, every counselor that is against it is quite capable of making a motion on the floor that would be a motion against it in some way. Maybe they're going to cut it a little bit, maybe they mean to add more to it, or maybe they want to just zero that out. They'll be able to come up with that motion. So I think we need to just deal with the motions that you prepared as the positive motions and see if we get those onto the floor first.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Counselor Smart?
If we don't vote to approve a RAD.
Yes.
Do we need to go through the step of voting it down? Or can we just let it die if it's not approved?
We can, we can let it die, or there can be another motion. So if there is no, there's no.
If there's, if there's a motion and a second, and it doesn't approve, or it's not approved, then.
We don't need to go any further.
Yeah.
Or, for example, there may be a counselor says, using the clerk's request for $13,343, there could be a motion that says, I would like to make the motion that the council approves $15,000 for a one-time expense at the request city clerk to fund the presidential primary.
So unless there's an amendment.
So it doesn't need to, so it doesn't need to be a motion. If the, if the first motion is voted down, there's no need for a new motion. But if a counselor is moved to make a motion, then I will accept a motion other than the printed motion, and it can be up or down or in any way otherwise modified. So that's, so as you look through here, or as those people who are, who are viewing this decide they're going to contact their counselor who agrees with a modification that they would make, they would, they could certainly do, seek or send an email to the entire council saying, please vote this one down. If it gets voted down, some other counselor, some counselor here could say, and I'd like to make a new motion. And that did happen last year where the executive assistant motion, well, was actually a negative motion that got voted in, so there was no funding of it. And then there was a second motion that came in that did fund halftime. And so that was, that's an example of that, could be something along those lines for the, so for the communications person, it could be that they're not funded at $43,000. They're, maybe they're dealt with as a halftime position, and, and we have to deal with it in that fashion. So the main motion will be as stated, it'll be given by that particular counselor, and then if it gets voted down, then we'll, I'll look to see if there is a motion associated with that. And if there is none, then we'll go to the next motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe for a RAD that's approved as part of the city administrator's budget, we do have to have a second motion to defund the RAD, because the first motion is just a no, but the motion itself really just says, I vote to approve 1.1% in line with the city administrator's budget. But to vote no, I don't know if that would be robust enough to reduce the city administrator's budget. That's why I'd recommended that if the vote fails, that's when we do have to go either to a defund the RAD motion or to a modify.
Well, the motion, the, the way I read it is a motion to vote no is to defund the RAD.
No. No.
The motion, the motion is approve a shift or support.
Using the, using the motion on number page forty-six, the city council does not approve $13,343 as a one-time expense. And that gets voted down, you're saying that that is not sufficient for that RAD to be dead?
Correct, because it's already a part of the recommended budget. So the recommended budget that I gave to council is the budget that would be approved if no amendments were made. I'm, the request last year was, or the request as part of last year was, instead of, instead of just choosing which RADS to discuss, the council wanted to make a motion on every single one of the RADS, those that were included as part of my recommended budget and those that were not. So that's what we're trying to do here in this process, is allow the council to say, you know what, we're going to make a motion to support what the administrator has proposed. And if you don't support what the administrator has proposed, then you have to have a backup motion to say, we're going to defund it, or we're going to change it to X.
But you don't know which counselor is going to take what option.
I don't. That's why we were trying to negotiate that at this stage.
So if it gets voted down, I have to ask a counselor to make a motion of any sort just so that the item is finally killed?
Correct.
Great.
Because we're trying to, remember, we're trying to stay on the positive with the yeses. If the council votes yes, then the change happens.
And if the council votes no, then I have to search for a motion that does something that is, we don't want it. So no vote, so if it gets voted down, that's not sufficient to say the council doesn't want it. We actually have to have a motion that says, and the council doesn't want it.
That's what we're proposing here.
I would think that the vote by council is amending the recommended budget. Would be what I would, on the surface, think anyway.
Yeah.
But if that's not the case, couldn't we, if you had a council that was opposed to something, couldn't they, once the main motion's on the floor, amend it to defund it? And then vote on that? And if that passed, then we're done with it? And if not, then you go back to the main motion?
Yeah. Because each one of these is a main motion. So every one of these is a main motion.
If I may, that is where people got confused last year, because you would have a main motion, which was to cut the RAD, but a reduction of the RAD means a yes vote versus a no vote. So if we don't consistently vote yes or no on the RADS all the way down, it can be confusing if you're simply drawing amendments to the floor. And we can go that way, but I don't have the opportunity to prepare for you motions ahead of time saying, what does a yes vote, no, what does no vote mean? And let's have that conversation now. It's going to be a little bit, it's going to be similar to last.
And I don't think that's a predictable conversation. I really, you know, my experience is that when the motion gets voted down, that means that the council doesn't want to deal with that. But I'm certainly willing to look for a new motion, including asking counselors to do that. But Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couldn't we just prepare like you have in workshop item E at the end of the, I think it's the 100th page of the packet? Just a generic motion that we, that could be provided, that we could refund, that defunds a RAD as, as, you know?
Yeah. If we don't. If you, what you want is a negative motion on this, then print a motion for every single one of these that says, be it ordered that the city council does not approve, and, and every, for every single one of, of these main motions. And that will be what the council can start with, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the council will agree with that. So.
In the previous years, haven't we just, if we didn't approve a RAD, it goes away?
That's what I was under the impression, but I'm told right now that they want to see a, an actual motion to get rid of it as opposed to not accept it.
Correct, because this is, this is, this is the process that we discussed after the budget process last year. The comment was, we want to vote on every single one of them. But the, but by charter, the city administrator is to, to prepare a budget and submit it to the council.
That's a good point.
So you have the recommended budget that includes RADS that I approved.
Right.
So the council now has to either say, go down the list tonight and say, I don't want to do this, or we do want to do this, and therefore allow us to create forms, or you need to submit forms for every single one of these about what your intent is.
Okay. And all I would say is that for every single one of these, make, make a, a negative motion that causes it to be zero, and we'll see, for those that fail, if that motion is being made. And by somebody that's most likely in the prevailing side of voting it down.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we're going to do it this way, if any counselor takes a RAD, they can, at the time of vote, either give you a positive or a negative approach. So in the end, so if there's RAD seven, and I don't like, I'm just making the number up, RAD seven.
Yeah, no, that's right, yeah.
He gets handed to me, and I don't like it, I still can vote against it, and I can still speak in the negative because I would be, well, I would speak in the positive because it's against.
Well, because you make the motion.
Yeah.
So the counselor, for example, example, Counselor Doyle is listed as the counselor who makes the motion associated with the one-time expense for the presidential election. But he will have the option of either making it as a positive motion or a negative motion.
That is what we did last year, and that is where many of the counselors got confused about what they were voting, up or down, plus or minus money.
So we need to actually deal with it as two motions, first up, and if that fails, then down.
That's the way I was trying to present this.
Okay.
And again, it's, there are different types of amendments. There's amendment type one, which are the one, which are the RADS that were approved by the administrator.
Right.
That, those are the ones where you have, you could have variance. If the council says they're not in favor of that RAD, they now need to say, do they want to, do they want to defund it completely, or do they want to amend it to some extent?
And that also is true with all of the line items. So that.
Those are, those are, consider other changes or amendments that are made on the floor. So you see type four, type five, type six. Type four are the other RADS that the council could consider, that the, the department submitted.
But we don't need two motions for that.
No, we don't.
Because we're just automatically accepting those.
Or not.
Or, yes, or not. So it's only the RADS that we're confirming.
Only the RADS that the administrator approved.
Administrator approved.
Are the ones that may have modifications to them.
Yeah.
Those are the only ones that might have modifications to them.
So to my right, any questions on if it's a, if in your budget book, it's a recommended RAD, then that needs a vote to accept or a vote. Or denial of the vote to accept, and then the negative vote. So.
So, so.
Okay.
How long is that going to drag on Monday night? Because I, I think the vote, the vote, if we don't approve a RAD, it should be defunded because we didn't approve it.
Can we just agree to that right now?
We shouldn't need to go through another motion to defund it after we've already said that we're not in favor of the RAD. It's a duplication of process.
I'm going to go to my left for right now because I've been sticking to my right. So I have two hands raised. Let's go with Counselor Minton, who always is willing to make a pithy comment, and then we'll go to Counselor Smart.
Oh, that's so kind of you.
Well, you're so smart.
I think we should print out about 50 copies of the chart that's currently projected, some of which are for counselors, most of which will be for everybody else in the room. And we follow what's suggested on the chart, and let's keep going, or we're going to be here till midnight.
Thank you again. Very pithy, thank you very much. Counselor Smart?
Quick suggestion going off of what Counselor Doyle just alluded to. Why don't we just agree right now that if we do not approve a RAD, then it is by definition killed unless somebody makes a subsequent amendment?
Another emotion, another emotion to amend.
But we're, make sure we're.
Better promoting, but we can't, we're not voting, so I would second that.
Let's make sure we're talking about the approved RADS, because.
Yes.
RADS that come up in other categories, you know, may go.
Not the recommended ones, but only, or not the requested ones, but the recommended ones that are in that.
Yes, and this is where your finance director was wondering if there were people who were interested in, in saying no, if they had a backup motion. But if the council is comfortable with coming up with their motion ahead of time, in case it's, in case it's not a complete defund.
Right.
And that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at. If it was a no at that first level in the type one, don't go anywhere with that, please. If it was a no on the type one, you, then I would, it would be nice to know whether or not the council, one more time, whether or not the council wants to completely defund it, or if they're looking to modify it. Because I'd like to have staff be able to. Because I'd like to have staff be able to respond if, you know, oh, can we live with it being $2,000 less or $20,000 less, and it goes away?
Yes.
So I'd like, I'd like to be able to have that conversation tonight. That was the intent.
So what I'm dealing with right now is a recommended, recommendation for another rule, though.
A process change.
A process change that says, and I'm looking for consensus. Oh, it's only, it's not even 8 o'clock. Come on, we've got another three hours. So Counselor Smart's recommendation, and I'd like to see if there's council consensus on that, that we have a rule that, for Monday's meeting. And that rule is that if a recommended RAD is introduced and fails, that unless there's a follow-up motion on that RAD, that recommended RAD, that the city administrator will consider that a dead item in the recommended, that the city's finance, finance director will change the yes to a no on the mill rate. So that's, I'm looking for consensus. Any opposition? Do you agree with what I just said? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, and I just want to make clear that that's not, you know, to the exclusion of somebody lowering the number, raising the number.
That's right, but if it's voted down, then a new amendment can come in that raises or lowers the number or modifies that particular motion in any way they wish. And if nobody does, then we go to the next RAD, recommended RAD. So any comments or any negatives to my left? Okay, now we have the comments to my right, and I have two. Let me start with Counselor Doyle, and then Counselor Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If we bring the main motion to the floor, and it's voted down, and then somebody wants to amend, why wouldn't you just make an amendment on the main motion as we've done in the past three budget sessions that I've been a part of? And I understand there was comments made in the last budget process that some people didn't know what they were voting on. But I would, I would go back to, I think those were comments made from the public, not from the counselors. I think the counselors are, although they didn't have a line item budget last year, which is something we asked for many times, I think the counselors knew which way they were voting. However, I'm not in favor of making any specific rule for the budget process for next week.
Okay, so let me just elaborate on that. It's within the rule that if any counselor wants to amend the main motion, that amendment must be voted on first before any additional amendments to the main motion occur. That's Robert's Rules of Order.
And that's piggybacking Counselor Doyle. I'll make a motion, like not a real motion, but a sample motion.
Yep.
$500 per paper.
Right.
I decide I want it to be 300. I make an amendment to say 300.
That's right.
And that gets voted on. Now that new motion, well, if it's 300...
If it passes, it's 300, then we vote on 300, yeah.
Then it's a zero, and then you go back.
Then you go back.
That's the normal process. Let's not make this more complicated it is. Because if it gets too complicated, I might just vote every RAD down just because I'd rather vote with knowledge and not just, why am I confused? And vote for an expense.
I think any confusion is going to arise from a lateness of hour.
Thinking, if I don't understand what's going on, it will just be a default, no.
Well, I think...
And that's not beneficial to anybody because it should be a conscious decision. But if it gets lost in yays and nays, and revoting against the nay, and revoting against the yes, that's just more complicated than I can handle. And that makes it a no.
Okay, so let me, are you all set? Okay. So all I'm saying is, I think we're just going to be following Robert's rules. And, and so if it gets voted down, then it can be, a new motion can be put forward, or not. And if it is amended, then that becomes the motion that's on the floor until it's, until the argument is over. And then we go back, depending on the vote, to that main motion. And then if there's another amendment, we'll go back to getting rid of that amendment, and then back to the main motion. And I would hope that we understand that because it's Robert's Rules of Order.
There, it's amended.
Well, there, see, there's the amendment.
There we go. Thank you.
So, so are we, so we're all set with that? I'd like to stick with Counselor...
I'd like to do hand votes and make it even faster.
Oh, yeah, I know.
You can.
Well, I don't see, as I read the charter, it says something about roll call votes, but... So, okay. Any questions? Is that acceptable to my right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just going to basically follow Robert's rules. Where are we now? Well, we've done 46. We're all the way up to 40, page 47. So on page 47, I have...
Mayor, you can kick me out.
So that's okay. I have a police officer here, so, so anyway. Be it ordered that the city council approve 8,001 time expenses as requested by the clerk to fund a zoning ordinance revision as recommended by the city administrator. So where I left off was Counselor Mintern. Are you willing to do that one?
Yes.
And next up is amending, be it ordered that the city council approve $40,000 in ongoing expense as requested by fire ambulance to fund a 5%, 5% union increase as recommended by the city administrator, and I think approved when the council approved the contract. Counselor, are you next, Counselor Smart, or is it...
I believe so.
Okay.
Despite your intonations, I'm going to take that, and assuming that that is what we actually agreed to.
I think we did, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out for process that 3% was already budgeted in the, in the line item budget. So it's really just approving an additional 2%, not an additional 5%, but just FYI.
And with that in mind, maybe we can clarify that in the motion for Monday, just to make everybody else aware of that.
Right, that 3% having been approved in the original contract, and 2% having been approved in the acceptance of the updated contract. Okay, so be it ordered the city council approve $5,000 in ongoing expense at the request of fire ambulance to fund an increase in stipend for call firefighters. Counselor Johnston, are you acceptable, do you find that acceptable, Johnston? Okay, next is be it ordered the city council approve $4,000 in ongoing expense at the request, as requested by assessing, to fund a comprehensive, comprehensive ongoing training for new employees, which sounds like it's pretty necessary. Counselor Archer, yes, thank you. We still doing okay? Okay, good. So Mr. Sutherland's too distracted, so thank you very much, Mrs. Sallis. And I was going to go with Counselor Gay first. You want to be Counselor Gay? Be it ordered the city council reduce 20,000 from the ongoing expense of parks and rec, and an increase to the capital program of $29,752 in support of a new forestry bucket truck. Counselor Copeland would like to have that as a motion. Would you yield that to her?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so Counselor Copeland, you find that acceptable? Okay, so that's Counselor Copeland, so we're out of order, but I can remember. Be it ordered that the city council approve $2,045 in one-time expense that was requested by the clerk to fund temporary election help for the FY 2020 budget?
I'll jump in and agree with you.
Counselor Gay's next, so if you don't mind, I'll go with Counselor Gay. And then next is, is be it ordered that the council approve $35,000 in one-time expenses requested by code enforcement to fund a life, to fund life safety violation elimination. So Counselor Doyle, are you willing to do that one? Nope, okay. Counselor Mintern, willing to do support $35,000 for the, as a one-time expense for code enforcement to aid in eliminating life safety violations when they find that during a building inspection?
I am so willing.
Okay. Do you need any explanation of that? Do you know what that means?
I know exactly what it is.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I'm ready to, yeah, no, I, I wanted to make sure. I was surprised that, I mean, life safety, you know, we know that when Dick, or Dave, or Dawn go into a house and find somebody that's living in a substandard environment, it's to help them out in some way.
It's elimination.
Right?
Light.
Generally, it's to enforce a court order when we have to prosecute, and we very seldom do that, but when we do, we want to be able to tap the funds we need to take the abatement action that is in the order.
All set? Thank you. The next up is similar. The council approves $126,402 in ongoing expense and $17,650 in one-time expense as required, as requested by fire ambulance to bring shift staffing to nine on all four shifts. And that would be, as I understand it, an increase in two, and two from the current staffing. So Counselor Smart, I think you're next up.
I'm fine to take that. Did we skip?
What's that?
Did we skip Counselor Copeland?
Oh, we, no, she, we didn't. She got the parks and rec bucket truck.
I'll take that one.
And next up is be it ordered the city council approve $37,196 in ongoing expense and $2,305 in one-time expense as requested by human services to fund an administrative assistant. And we'll need a little explanation there, there. But Counselor Johnston, you're next up. Are you comfortable there?
Yes.
So you want to explain $37,196. Does that fully fund an administrative assistant for you, Mrs. Catholic? It does. Oh, that's just, so it's straight up, that includes the benefits and everything?
Yes, because part of it is also tied to the change in administration. So I'm using $24,000 out of adminis, if the council chooses to support this, $24,000 will come out of administration and go into human resources to help cover the cost of that position.
So, so you're comfortable making that motion without referring to the $24,000 coming out of administration?
Why don't we add it to the motion to clarify?
Yeah, so could you make that as a clarification to that motion?
Yep.
And Counselor Copeland?
Can, Mrs. Catholic, can you explain the need?
Can we do this Monday night?
Currently, I have Kristin Booth, who is spending, I would say, 95% of her time on payroll.
Don't we have paychecks now?
We do, we do, but she still is, we're in the process of trying to figure out how we're going to be doing our reporting with paychecks. We've had issues with trying to map Munis to paychecks. So she's been spending a lot of time in regards to working with their IT folks on how to develop reports. With her being there and doing that much within payroll, I'm doing the short-term disability, the long-term disability, and I'm out of, I, trying to do the employee relations piece when the employees are coming in is getting more difficult because we have timelines for the short term, the long terms. We've had a lot of short, long, and FMLA, so I'm back to doing the generalist position.
But we really need you to be doing policy. So, so I'm trying to understand why we got this new paycheck to make things more streamlined and more efficient, and yet we have someone working on payroll 95% of the time now.
Correct.
I don't, what's the benefit of paychecks, then?
I think that knowing that we're in compliance, we're in Munis, and I think I could have Glennis speak to that about the taxes or the concern about being out of compliance. We didn't have that with Munis. And they take the responsibility for the W2s and the compliance and working with the government. We didn't have that. We've never had that.
And what do other paycheck customers, do you get feedback from them that, do they have someone totally dedicated?
I would say that what we have found is that we were told that they worked with municipalities and that their software package was all set and ready to go. When we started working, Kristin, Glennis, and myself, and then the directors were involved, we found that the intricacies of the different organizations are huge. It's not like we're doing a, a non-exempt which has ABC between the call or, and everything regarding the union. It was a tremendous effort. We basically became programmers.
But wouldn't that be upfront kind of work? So why would we be getting a new person that would be, you know, a long-term employee?
I think to be able to either decide if that individual is going to be more on the benefit side, but that person is going to be in the front office of HR in order to be able to answer some of the basic benefit questions and help me out, you just indicated the policies that we're behind on, and being able to be a backup support to Kristin for the payroll piece. If for any reason something happened to her, she's got, I'd either have to assist or rely on Glennis to come in and assist the payroll piece with me. And again, then what happens is it continues to roll backwards in regards to trying to satisfy the need of the employees. I hear, I hear HR is not responsive. I am at my desk, I do my emails, I'm working in regards to the employee relations piece 24/7. I have an open door policy. I don't be stricted to say, come in and schedule because my feeling is if they're coming to me, there's a need, and I don't, it's customer service.
Absolutely. But, and I appreciate that. I honestly do, for real. But I have to consider also taxpayers. And we had, at one point, HR was part of finance, and it so needed to be broken down. But now we're going to a department of three. So just from the taxpayer perspective, is, you know, we need justification, I suppose.
I think what didn't come up is when the other individual was in HR, that person was more dedicated to payroll than the HR side. So Kevin took on the employee relations piece and any legal issues. She wasn't experienced in that, so she pretty much did payroll. And I think what you found out is that when she left, it was due to burnout, that she, she loved...
We absolutely need HR.
You know, she loved payroll, but she didn't understand the, the basics of HR. And that's not putting anyone down.
No.
She went into the position, assuming that she was going to do payroll, and then took on other areas. So I guess it's a, it's really up to you folks. And it comes down to trying to give really good service to our employees. But we go back to, again, as, I hate that saying, kicking the can down the road. I understand what you're saying, and start off with one, that was great. I say times have changed, and having to be able to be on top of not just your employee relations, but the legal aspect has been huge. So there's a lot of research that goes on, there's a lot of information gathering. When I start doing that, I can't help Kristin with the benefit side of it, the short term, the long term, and it sounds menial, but it's huge because then the employees are the ones that are impacted, and we'll say... that are impacted and will say, you know, I'm not getting service from you folks, so.
And we have an excellent workforce, and we need to make everyone happy. It's important.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. I mean, I don't look at it as, if it wasn't a need, I wouldn't be here asking for it. I wouldn't just throw that out because I feel really good about having more people behind me. I feel that it's difficult to--
I understand, but it is a balancing act.
I understand.
And we have lots of numbers here that we have to--
I understand, I totally understand.
--make tough decisions about. So what about, instead of full-time, what about, you know, sharing or part-time or?
I would definitely consider that. I mean, that's what I, I look at it, what's best? Something is better than nothing to at least assist with the amount of foot traffic that we have. If Kristen's doing the payroll, I'll say to her, it's payroll. She doesn't answer the phone.
Right.
The phones will be forwarded to me, and if I'm in a meeting, they're not going to be answered. I have them moved to something else.
And the benefits, do they get renegotiated every year? Is that just a certain time of year or?
Well, we have, it's, HR has a complete schedule, so fall is open enrollment, so we end up putting packets together, but also the information regarding whether there's an increase in the premiums or not. From that, we have, we have to start all over again for flexible spending, forwarding out the paperwork. We input all of that, and then we've got to forward those to our vendors. Our group dynamic starts over again in the calendar year. Yeah, HR has a cycle. We go into January with the new benefit information and trying to get that in for the payroll.
I know the fall and the January are busy, but, I mean, maybe during the summer or something?
Summer, this summer, I'm hoping we'll be working on the policies in the handbook.
Thank you.
I was hoping, I think the Personnel Committee meets in another week, and I will be bringing a pretty extensive handbook that I've been working on and--
Has the committee made a recommendation on this?
I believe we did recommend this in our committee meeting, yes.
So we're in the process of doing that. So it's, and again, those things that are projects are so important to running HR and running or assisting employees, but it's not like I can sit there and just work on projects, so.
Okay.
But I appreciate it.
Thank you for the explanation.
And appreciate it considering it. Thank you.
So Counselor Copeland, are you looking for the staff? Mrs. Salas could prepare an amendment if you're looking to amend the main motion or?
I'm going to think about this.
Okay, turn your microphone on.
I'm going to think about this.
You're going to think about it, and will you be able to, do you think you'll submit something before, sometime before the meeting on Monday for them to pair pair, or you're going to go just off the top of your head?
I'm going to think about it.
Okay, fine, thank you. So Counselor Johnston, you're still in favor of making that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Next is, be it ordered, the city council approve $11,600 in ongoing expense as requested by human resources to fund recruitment, fund recruitment advertising as recommended. So Counselor Archer?
No, I reserve right to speak against it.
What's that?
I actually brought this, and the reason why I bring this up is I actually brought this up with the County Budget Committee yesterday.
Okay.
The Sheriff's Department, the jail system is about 50% of capacity.
I, I know.
And I asked, does he need more recruitment money?
Yep.
And that would go to the HR. So the county administrator, Greg Zizner, Zeisner, I believe, sorry.
Zinzer.
Thank you, I thought I had it right.
Bill's got that name memorized.
He offered to increase his budget because he said that it would be ineffective because this type of recruitment, and this is through the county, this government recruitment is just hard in general, and additional funding would not actually produce--
So the answer is no. So Counselor, Counselor Gay, would you make this motion? No. Counselor Doyle, would you make this motion?
We just--
Counselor, Counselor Copeland, would you make this motion?
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Okay, great. You wish Michelle was going to answer. I prepped her. So, I mean, there's a lot of sites out there, Indeed.com and, you know, LinkedIn and all these other things. What is this money going to do for us?
Well, I'm hoping that it will assist with doing more with LinkedIn and social media and working with Emily Roy on trying to be better at where we look. We do Indeed, we haven't gotten anyone on that, and in fact, it's extremely expensive. We've gone into jobs in Maine, we don't get anything in jobs in Maine, we post in MMA, we've posted in the ICMA, the national, we don't get anything in there. So basically, we, I would say, rob from Peter to pay Paul, so we're all out there looking at the other communities and in hoping that our individuals, say, like in the PD, will reach out and let someone know why it's a great place to work and try to bring them in that way. I've, I've talked to Deputy Chief Clemens about recruiting, and we've both talked about if it is a national issue, but it may mean taking individuals and having them go to another state and do job fairs elsewhere. We don't do that currently. PD and fire may go up to Southern Community or the various universities, but we're at a loss as to how to bring in new people.
What about job fairs? Is job fair all around?
It's, as, as they've indicated prior to the skill set, they're not there. The employees aren't there, and if they are, they've either already been handpicked by another organization. They're very limited.
Counselor Archer made--
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I was just going to say, we know that that, there's a national lull in these positions, so we're trying to figure out how to be creative to do it.
Well, I think that's great to be creative and deal with it because I listened to Counselor Archer say that the county has said it is a problem, and we have to get creative, but the money's not going to solve it.
Well, I talked, when I did my presentation, I said that I be, I believe it begins, and this is to what you've said, is it's a state, for, matter of speaking, it's a state issue right now for Maine and many, many others. But by handpicking those, we're, we're not doing anything, taking Portland to bring them here, and then Portland wants ours. And you're right, we have to work as a state collaboratively to figure out how to do this. I don't know how to do that. I feel bad for our departments because the overtime that these employees are incurring is tremendous. I have very, very tired PD and fire individuals because of the amount of either people being out, workers comp or short-term disability, and then not--
I think it also relates to the type of occupation, so--
Sure, sure.
Mr. Zinzer was referring to corrections officers, and anybody who wants a tour of the York County Jail, Counselor Doyle or I can arrange that. You'll find that it's, it's, to some extent, it's a scary place. And so all I can say there is that Howard Carter probably has less difficulty recruiting people for his department than Chief Clemens has for his department. So it just, it varies along those lines.
Right.
The training requirements are different for fire, police, or water, et cetera.
Correct. The other thing, too, is, I mean, when you just said, who do we or how do we advertise? We opened the customer service rep under Finance. I think it was open for maybe three or four weeks. We scheduled the interviews last Friday, we interviewed Monday and Tuesday, and I made an offer last night. So again, it, it's very different. We're talking about a customer service rep, and we had many qualified individuals that we looked at between Bitterford, Saco, and Scarborough, and brought in someone from the area. So again, you're absolutely right, Mayor.
So Counselor Copeland?
So what about using that money to do wonderful things, to make it the most best job and entice people differently?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm just wondering if you could use that money internally to make it, you know, improve the workplace somehow, some way, so that it gets known that everybody wants to work for Saco?
I think we're trying to do that. I believe that one, the, I believe that the communications specialist, Emily Roy, is on the right track with doing that. She's bringing between branding, but also she assisted me with putting it on LinkedIn. Denise, I believe it was Denise Clavett's position. We put it on, linked it to my LinkedIn, and between four o'clock the afternoon that Emily put it, posted it, when I got back in the morning at seven, there were 254 hits. And we're not basically charged for that because no one's applied yet, but as soon as they apply, the amount goes up. So we're trying, and she's doing a very good job in trying to assist, so what she ended up doing was asking me, and then she sent an email to the folks in the city to say, if you're on LinkedIn, if you can put the city website on there, and then it'll link over into, so--
She's done that, I've seen that.
It, it sounds like it may be miniscule, but for a municipality, it's huge. There are not a lot of municipalities that are doing what she's doing in regards to the communications piece. So we're trying, we are. About being better, I think Emily's, Emily is going out and bringing in and doing all kinds of things. You saw the video that Jack had done in regards to recruiting.
So is that what the money's going for, for the videos?
Well, we have to pay for the videographer and things like that, and I think that--
That's in our marketing budget. That's separate.
I was just going to say, that's in her marketing budget.
I still don't have a, like a direct handle on what this $5,000--
So it costs about, it's $11,600 is the request. It's about eight, we've, we assume, and if, in the write-up for this RAD, there's an explanation of the dollar amount and the reason for the dollar amount. It costs about $800 a month to actually recruit somebody for, in, with the today's technology and the databases that we have access to. LinkedIn costs us money. If we do get a hit through LinkedIn, there's a fee for us. So as we look at these databases and other ways to attract people to Saco externally, we have to spend money to get them to consider our community.
Okay.
Indeed doesn't work well. Jobs in Maine doesn't work well. We get some pretty terrible candidates, and in fact, that's how we get attacked sometimes through our security, too, our cybersecurity.
So Counselor Copeland, if you don't mind, I'd like to go to a couple of other counselors and then come back to the rest of your questions. So Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So again, this is my insight on this situation, just an observation, but I think most people, say, a teacher, for example, they're looking to be, they're a teacher, they have that degree, they know how to use it. Municipal government, a lot of people don't know they want to necessarily work in municipal government because they don't understand what municipal government does. You know, they understand police officer, police officer. But outside of that, a lot of people don't know what code enforcement does or what is in that realm. So the challenge of just throwing a job, posting up on LinkedIn and hoping to get hits, well, you'll get people that maybe already work in that environment, but younger generation that don't really know that maybe I should be an assessor. They don't know, don't know what it does. But using this money, at least how I view using this money is, is running, you know, potential ads on Facebook where the vast majority of younger people are, you know, tuned into 24/7 with an ad from Saco Maine that pops up with a real in-depth explanation as to what this job is. Going on LinkedIn, it's just, like I said, you know, city clerk. Well, what's a city clerk? Most people don't know, unless you're involved in government.
Counselor Doyle, and then Counselor Mintern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that we, we're on page 57 of 100, and we're approaching the 8:30 hour, just so everyone's aware. But moving on from that, I just want to point out that throwing money at a problem does not solve it. The city of Westbrook put out a $14,000 sign-on bonus for police officers. They still have problem recruiting police officers. Throwing money at a problem does not solve it. Police officers, as everybody knows in here, because it's been said, it's a, there's a, there's a problem with recruiting police officers and law enforcement in general and public safety in general, all across the, the United States. I mean, Chief Duras spoke in his presentation about the, the on-call fire folks or, you know, the on-call staff, that they're not, they're not doing it much anymore, they're having trouble getting people to apply for positions. So throwing $11,600 that this is not a problem, and Counselor Archer was correct, in the county, they offer now a $1,400 or $1,500 sign-on bonus from correction, for correctional officers. It has done nothing to fill the 35 positions down that they are. So I, you know, just once again, we got to keep that in mind, is that we, you know, while we're recruiting, throwing money at the problem's not going to solve it.
Though it might be good for some types of job descriptions, certainly there are others that are more difficult to fill.
Well, we haven't, I, I haven't seen from all the positions that have been advertised that we've had a problem filling some of these other positions, such as the planner, such as the, the Economic Development Specialist and those positions.
And we've had to spend money to do that.
Right, but it seems that people, people put in for those jobs.
It does take some money to do that. So getting back to the question at hand, Counselor Copeland, are you going to be willing to make that motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor Copeland is going to make the motion on $11,600. Next up is, be it ordered, the city council approve $115,822 in ongoing expense and $5,805 in one-time expense requested by Information Technology to fund a cybersecurity program manager. Well, Counselor Archer's not here, Counselor Gay? Nope, Counselor Doyle? Counselor Mintern?
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
We need a three-hour discussion on this one because of the amount of money, right? Yeah, yeah, that's, it's trying to be pithy, you know?
You won't, and you are, sir, and you are, thank you very much. So the next one up is, approve $13,500 in ongoing expenses requested by Information Technology to fund Sophos Intercept X Plus EDR, which is an antivirus software presumably. Yep, Mr. Panero agrees with that. Counselor Archer, we're on page 58. You got it? Are you willing to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, rolling right along. Next up is, be it ordered, the city council approve $10,000 in ongoing expense as requested by Information Technology to fund End Discovery Managed Threat Protection. Again, another piece of software, I presume. So Counselor Gay? Next up is $17,000, city council approves $17,907 one-time expenses requested by Parks and Rec to fund a airator, airifier? Is that really what it is called, airifier? As recommended by the city administrator? Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Did you ever talk to TA about theirs?
Yes, I have, and they're in the process of switching over, so, and they have a new facility coordinator, we'll have another conversation.
So you can't partner with them?
Right now, they're in the process of going out with their guys company.
City council, be it ordered, the city council approve $2,000 in ongoing expense at the request of Planning Economic Development to fund a program coordinator, planning economic development for a program coordinator. So, I, let me check here, I think it's Counselor Mintern is next?
Sure.
Okay. No, you get, you get the security program manager. So which, Counselor Smart?
Sure, I'll take it.
Smart, okay.
Yeah, you get the little ones.
Be it ordered, the city council approve $137,536 in ongoing expense and $1,650 for one-time expense, the request of the police department to increase police patrol by two. Counselor Johnston?
No.
No. Counselor Archer? Counselor Gay?
No.
Counselor Doyle? Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
There you go. So, Councilor Copeland says yes. So, getting back to be it ordered the city council approve $12,800 in one-time expense at the request of the police department to fund a patrol PC upgrade. And so, that's, that's to upgrade the laptops.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston will do that one. The next one up is be it ordered the city council approve $32,000 in one-time expense at the request of Public Works to fund a solid waste curbside collection program. Councilor Archer?
I'll refer that to Councilor Johnston if you want.
Yes.
That was his baby.
Okay, Councilor Johnston gets a second one, so I gotta remember to skip over you in this round. Okay, so be it ordered the city council approve $5,638 in ongoing expense at the request, as requested by the city solicitor for additional resources to cover attorney's fees. $5,638 to cover additional attorney's fees. Councilor Archer?
Yes, but not a dollar more. It seems very specific.
Yeah, right. I know, I'm just, and-
That would be our attorney, though.
That's like, that's right. So, it's 10 hours of a very expensive attorney, or, or 100 hours of a very inexpensive one, so.
I don't know if I want that attorney.
Be, be it ordered that the city council reduce, whoa, okay, reduce by five, $52,377 ongoing revenue, well, we're reducing revenue, transfers from the ambulance fund, so that the ambulance fund can achieve sustainability to cover the cost of a replacement ambulance. Councilor Gay accepts that one. Uh, next up is be it ordered the city council approve $4,900 ongoing expenses requested by the Dire Library to fund a salary increase. Councilor Doyle is actually the councillor on the board, too. So, you will accept that one?
Yes.
Wow, perfect timing. It's, uh, it's made to pass. Okay, the next one is be it ordered the city council approve $3,200, yeah, $302,175 in ongoing expense requested by the Capital Projects to fund a Make Capital Plan, to fund Make Capital Plan Whole. And that would be, I think we did Councilor Copeland, uh, who accepted the earlier one, and so it's Councilor Minton.
Sure.
Okay, so, so, yeah, Councilor Copeland accepted doing the, uh, the increased police patrol. So, Councilor Minton is sure with-
Like to take the next one as well.
Oh, you want the next one as well? Okay, so, just a second. So, that's the Capital Projects Fund, and you want the next one, which is $25,295 ongoing expense to fund the Improved Senior Tax Relief Program. Councilor-
I'd like to speak to that if I might.
Yes, sir.
We had a informal meeting yesterday of the Senior Tax Abatement Committee, and in reviewing the ongoing costs of this program, the proposed state law changes that the governor has signed that should go into effect in September, October, the fact that the minimum wage is gonna go from $11 to $12 at the end of the year. Um, I had proposed something in an email, and I know Kevin was slammed with emails today, uh, and-
We all were.
We, everyone was, yeah. Um, I've thought long and hard about this, and, and I would like to see if we might propose a number in the budget that would equate to, like, one cent of the mill rate, whatever that would add up to-
Whoa.
For this program, and not only this program, but take one cent of the mill rate and set it aside for the Senior Tax Abatement Program, age-friendly Saco funding, possibly senior seniority funding, so that all of our senior stuff is in a special fund that has a penny attached to it.
That would be about $23,000.
Would it be 23 cents? Maybe it'll be 5 cents for seniors, or 4 cents for seniors, if that's the number. I'm just, I didn't know what the penny was equating to.
Two billion, 300 million, right? So, that's, 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 a penny on the mill rate would be 23,000.
Yes, so this incremental cost, if we were to, I just flagged it as yes, and the as selected mill rate did go up by a penny. So, this, but then the base cost of the senior program is 40,000, because you have 30,000 associated with the existing ongoing, um, tax credit amount plus the 10,000 for the senior coordinator. So, altogether, we're looking at 3 cents right now. And then, to factor in age-friendly Saco, I mean, right now, even at the, even at the higher amount of 10,000, that's about half a cent. So, you're talking 3 cents.
4 cents might be a realistic number.
4 cents would, would cover everything.
So, city staff will make an amendment for that main motion for you to make.
4 cents for senior programs or something like that, and-
Well, it'd be a, there'd be a, a number. There'd be a total of what-
Yeah, we can put the 4 cents in the background, because again, like, technically, the mill rate's set by the assessor, and so is the valuation amount, so can't guarantee, but yeah, it would be about 4 cents.
You get the general idea, and if we can craft an amendment to that effect. Because I, I think, you know, when we were doing a lot of the research on the senior tax abatement programs around New England, there were a number of communities that had a dedicated employee for their senior programs. And right now, I know we've got Mary Starr in the audience who, who works our senior tax abatement program. We got folks under Ryan that handle the senior seniority part of it, and then we've got age-friendly Saco over here on the side doing something else. And I'm just thinking, if we can dedicate a revenue source to our seniors in general, as a community, I think we're a lot further along the curve that we need to be on, because, you know, if we look at our mill rate calculator and we see 40, 50, 60 cents on the mill rate, I think the senior tax abatement program is gonna have a lot more customers next year than they had this year. Uh, it's gonna hit hard on a lot of our seniors, and I think we need to fund it at a higher level than what we're suggesting. We're basically maintenance-ing of effort on this thing with, you know, about 40 seniors participating and maybe another 10 or 20 if we elect to do the tax fairness credit match. But if we hit the mill rate at 50 cents or something like that, we're liable to have a lot more people signing up now, and we won't be funded for it.
Um, speaking of the expanded program at the state level, do you want to put forward a recommendation that's higher than what is currently recommended to fully fund? Because that was based on maintaining 750 tax credit and the 10,000 for the additional credit match program.
My feeling is we should fund it based on 1,200, which would be the second portion of the fiscal year is gonna be paid at $12 an hour.
Yeah.
And not knowing when these individuals are gonna participate in the program, I'd rather be safe than sorry. And then, if we did have extra, uh, and there were more individuals applying for a fairness credit match, or whatever, we can accommodate those, or we can hopefully roll that money into the next-year program and just continue it in that fashion. But I, I'm very concerned that this program, especially if we see a sizable increase in the mill rate, is gonna see some sizable growth over where it was this year.
Uh, so, to be clear, the same number of participants, but at 1,200 per participant rather than 750?
Well, it can't, it can't, it can't go up.
It can't go up until after September.
It only works later.
So, the challenge will be the council keeps the program the way it is until September, and then mod, puts, decides to put money aside, keeps the program the same until September, and then modifies the program to accommodate that.
Correct.
So, you, your first half of the year, you have applicants who are participating in the program and getting half of 750 credit worth, and then halfway through the year, changing it, maybe in January, changing it over to a higher amount. That's why my recommendation would be to wait until next year?
Do a budget amendment to it, so that when we get to that point, we do a budget amendment that matches the change in minimum wage and number of-
I think there's some more nuances that, um, I'd like to bring what the committee brought to the workshop next week, or not next week, sorry, on the 20th?
Yes, okay.
Good lord, we don't need any more next week. Bring, bring that work to the council on the 20th to discuss how this should play out or roll out.
What, all I'm suggesting, Kevin, we could, I think we should set aside more dollars in the budget now to cover this, and then work out the language details when the state law actually goes into effect from a migration standpoint.
And then you have the resources there as part of this budget instead of a-
Right, and that, and that way, the resources are already dedicated, and we're not coming back and revisiting this thing in October to do an add-on or whatever, an amendment to the budget at that point, or in January, or whatever. If we just set them aside now, they're there. If we don't use them, they can always go back into the revenue fund at the end of the fiscal year or whatever, so. That was my thought.
So, Kevin, Glenn, you guys know what the amendment to the main motion would look like, so that-
We can assume a dollar amount for now, and the question is, does the council want to increase the number of participants? But we can always address those.
Well, so, this is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll look to amend.
This is gonna be the motion that Alan makes, and then he's going to want to amend that motion to meet what he's brought up now.
A 12,000 per number of-
That's right. And so, you can put together that amendment, too. Councilor Copeland?
I am all about supporting the seniors. It's a number-one priority that I have, or on the top 10. But what about the young families? So, if we're taking this money and setting this aside for the seniors, and we have an older community, I get it. I'm, I'm not 25 still myself. I get it, but I'm concerned about those folks. We have, in this city, we have more foster kids than you can believe. We need to be supporting the young families as well, and, uh, I, I don't know.
If, if their income levels were such that they would be eligible for the fairness credit, then they could apply for that as a young family.
And in addition, it's gonna be covered in four days, and that will be the arguments back and forth once there is a motion on the floor. I don't think, we're not here to argue a motion that will occur on Monday. We're here just to straighten out who's gonna make the-
I thought it's a workshop, and we're gonna discuss our ideas about it.
Oh, we wanna make sure everyone understands what it is.
Well, I, I want my perspective heard as well.
Okay, and, and particularly on Monday, we wanna make sure it's heard, because there'll be a motion on the floor, and Alan will be looking for votes for that, and you'll be looking for votes against it.
I didn't say I'd be looking for votes against it. I said, it's something that we need to consider, and maybe the language is something that we consider. The, we have age-friendly Saco. Why can't it be an age-friendly thing?
Again, the, the idea behind what I'm suggesting is just setting aside more money in the budget in anticipation of possible program growth due to a sizable jump in the mill rate. That's that part of it. As Representative Bailey's now law comes online at the, at 90 days after seeing die at the legislature, when they close, her law comes into effect, which raises the option of 100 hours at the state minimum wage. This year, that would be $1,100. Next year, it would be $1,200. We can discuss, we're currently at, what, 75 hours, 750 an hour or something, to keep us under the 600 threshold. We can go ahead and move that, or adjust it, leave it alone, keep it the same, whatever.
Well, if you want to keep-
All I'm saying is, let's put aside a little extra money, is just in case. We can deal with the language issues in subsequent workshops and later in the summer.
Okay, I'm just thinking that saying that we're gonna put 4 cents on the mill rate or whatever, why don't we just stick it to whatever the calculated, uh, you know, fees would be?
Thank you, Emily. I'm just, putting that out as a number.
Thank you very much, Councilor Minton. Any other comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Thank you. Next up is, uh, the city council approved $6,500 in ongoing expenses requested to fund. I believe this is, this motion is out of order because it does not fall within the city administrator's purview. This is a, this is a motion that is only to be made by the council to modify the city charter. That must go to voters as a referendum.
Right, and it wouldn't actually, again, I was trying to budget some money for the inevitable request to change the charter to increase your salaries.
I didn't realize that it was an inevitable request.
I intend to propose that as something, if, if the council was supportive of this, I would try to put forward a motion to amend that. But if the council is not supportive of it, then just let it die.
Councilor Smart, are you willing to make this motion?
Ooh, Smart.
Which I believe is just adding slush into a particular-
Yes, let's move this along.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It's done. So, next up is, um, be it ordered that the city council move $4,915 in ongoing expense requested by the city administrator to fund an improvement, an improved council budget. Councilor Johnston, do you know what that means?
I think.
Oh, good, all right.
That, like snacks and whatnot?
That bottle of water, that bottle of water wasn't free.
That's a lot of snacks.
I, we made some, we made some coffee tonight. We also bought, brought some bottles of water. Um, I do have to figure out how to pay for these things, so having some money, additional money in the council's budget for snacks before meetings.
Now, it sounds like 65 grand, 6,500 is already there.
65 grand?
I just wanna-
You're gonna finally get paid?
Yeah, right.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that I gave a dollar to Dawn for the water.
All right.
Just FYI.
On my own.
That's, and I didn't take any water, so I'm all set.
Geez, we're up to about 30 cents an hour now.
Yeah, this is also for your MMA trainings, and I hope, you know, other events that council would like to attend. We, we do have some money in the budget, but we've already, we've already worked through that for this year.
Councilor Johnston is a yes. Okay, so, moving right along. The next, the next item up is 12,600 bucks ongoing expense by finance to find, to fund an increase in the internal auditor hours. Well, we hire one, and all of a sudden, we gotta get more hours in there, so that's great. Uh, Councilor Archer?
No, I'd like to change it.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Gay?
No.
Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
No. Councilor Smart?
Um, yeah, I'll take it.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. So, uh, next up is be it ordered the city council approve $11,200, $11,200 requested by IT to fund additional email licenses for all of these new people that we're hiring, apparently.
No.
No, no, this is, this is to change all of our boards and committees to have their own Saco, city of Saco email addresses.
It's just to give our, our, our fantastic volunteers an email address.
Correct.
Councilor Archer, are you ready for this?
Cool. Um, yeah, because some of our, it's, I mean, some of these freedom of information requests must be hard on someone's private account, because now they've just opened themselves to-
It's impossible.
Everything.
We can't take it.
Or you can't, well, then you gotta get court to get it.
Okay, fan, thank you. Be it ordered the city council approve $30,900 in ongoing expense and $825 in one-time- and $825 in one-time expense for Parkson Rec to fund a headcount park laborer position. Counselor Gay?
I'm going to pass.
Counselor Doyle?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
Can I ask what this is about specifically? Mr. Summers?
That podium might be live. See, can you hear me?
Oh, there you go. Can you hear me now?
So, what this position is, based on what we created in January, for our park side of the program, we are at a bare minimum, and we're running a six-man staff, or really, when you're doing about 240 acres, you're trying to do plantings on the grounds, you're trying to accommodate everything outside the grounds, and so forth. We're unbelievably max capacity was what we're trying to do, and we have no time for projects, no time for anything. But the flip side of it, during the wintertime, we would create, we'd be running the recreation side of it. So, again, we're not doing as much during the wintertime, so it would be a dual fold, dual position. By creating this position, what we did was, we have $21,000 set up in our seasonal employees for a nine-month seasonal employee. We can't find anybody for that position. So, the position's about $37,000. So, there'll be some money, $21,000. So, really, this accounts for about a $16,000 program, an increase in money that we use. $21,000 from seasonal, and then the $16,000 would be for what? The reason why it's $30,000, because you have to pay for the benefits and all that.
It says 30,900.
Because, so, it's $21,000 we would use, so it's 40, about 47,000 altogether, but with $21,000, you would drop down, and you had to pay for benefits and all that good jazz.
And would this person have a special driver's license so they could transport people in the vehicles?
So, all city employees would have, in the sense of a CDL for a bus driver license? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking about the minibus kind of more specifically, because we have this idea that we've talked about with the seniors being able to use that bus during certain hours of the day for their medical point-to-point appointment?
Well, in that regard, it's something that we talked about, but for a minibus, anybody can drive it as long as they're a city employee. They don't need a special driver's license or-
For the minibus?
For the minibus, because it's on a 15-passenger bus. Anything greater than that, you need a passenger endorsement license that would be allowed to drive that bus.
Would this person be available to do that, say, once a week or once every two weeks?
No, it's something that we talked about, and we talked about in the past, and a couple weeks ago. There's other issues that I think council should be aware of that puts you on the hook of a much greater issue when it comes to-
Coordinating?
I'm sorry, what?
Coordination, liability.
More the liability issues than anything else. But it's something that, if of interest, we could definitely sit down and talk about. But it's, for me, for this position, it would be to help us with the parks for the six, seven months, help us with recreation for the five months, so allow us to enhance our programs, and allow us to enhance our parks and our facilities throughout the year. That's really what this position was set up. Again, I know we talked about at Earth Day, what you're asking for, is something that we can continue to discuss moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Counselor Copeland will take that motion. Next up is, be it ordered that the city council, $137,536 in ongoing expense and $1,650 in one-time expense requested by the police department to increase police patrol by two. Counselor Gay?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's, at the end of this, it says, this increases the city administrator's budget. Does that mean that that gives you more money to fund the police department?
No, I was trying to separate out from the two that I had supported in my recommended budget. The police department requested a total of four, and as part of my recommended budget, I said, I thought maybe the council could handle two more, and this is the other two that they requested. So, this is not part of the budget, so the council would have to support above what I've already tried to include as part of the recommended.
This is a requested rad, but not a recommended rad.
I'll take it.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. Next up is, be it ordered that the city council approve $252,805 in ongoing expense and $3,300 in one-time expense requested by fire ambulance to fund additional staffing to work towards 40 members, that is, 10 per shift. Counselor Doyle? No.
All right, what do we have is-
Counselor Johnston?
No.
No. Okay, Counselor Mentorn. I'm sorry, Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor Copeland has page 76. So, next up is, be it ordered that the city council approve $30,000 in one-time expense requested by Public Works to fund garage fabrication equipment. Counselor Doyle?
I want to ask a question.
Sir?
I know I asked this during Director Fox's presentation to us, I just want to get a refresher on what the answer was. Would we be able to fund this as part of the new building project of the, of the, out of the bond money of the new building for Public Works? I know you said there might not be enough money left, and you were going to check on whether it could be done, but that's essentially my question.
From the time we talked about that till now, we have refined a lot more numbers. Everyone can see what's happening with construction costs in the newspaper and the projects being canceled. We're fortunate that our site costs didn't come in too much higher than we had put in our original budget two years ago, but they are higher. So, while outfitting equipment in the building is an eligible expense for the bond money, I can assure you that there is no money left to complete our building that's going to outfit it with this equipment.
What about the-
The other thing you asked was the life-
Right ahead, please.
What about funding this out of the money that's allocated for the wash bay? I know that we talked about funding the wash bay with $215,000 at the new Public Works facility. What about taking the remainder of that, a portion of the remainder of that to fund this?
If you took, if you took that entire wash bay allocation and just put it towards the new facility, I can, as we go, give you an itemized list of where it goes, and I can assure you, it's going to go towards long-lasting equipment, it's going to go towards either adding automation to some of our wash bay components so that it's more amenable to serving the buses as well. I will put that money to great use, and it would outfit our building with equipment that we're going to be, I mean, frankly, we're going to get a building for the bottom-dollar price that we put forward that's functional, but it's not going to be equipped with what most new Public Works facilities have day one. This would help that, yes.
Kevin, if we allocated the $325,000 that we have set aside for the wash bay to this, would that increase the budget?
No. It's already, it's assigned.
I'd like to make a motion, have a motion to move that money to fund this.
I'd like to clarify that. 225,000 of the, or 215,000 is going to the wash bay. So, I had prepared a motion to make to take the 110 that was left over and ultimately add it to the capital plan, but if Director Fox thinks he can better utilize those funds in DPW, then I'd prefer to do that.
Well, and my question is, with the expense and the life of this piece of equipment, why isn't it part of the capital?
Right.
It's going to, it's got a 20-year life probably to it, if not-
Oh, much, much more, yeah, yeah. This is a 30-year piece of equipment. It, the administrator had to make choices in what he could put forward to you. This was a new asset for us, so therefore, I can understand why it wasn't on his recommended budget. But at the same time, it's a very valuable piece of equipment that our fleet manager brought to me. I couldn't get it in my directive budget, but it's a, it's certainly a great asset to add, especially with a new facility that we were going to be capable of so much more, because we'll have more room. But it's not, we don't have a lot of new assets, again, put forward in the capital plan, because we struggle with just reaching those funding levels to take care of everything that we already have. So, that's the only reason. I wasn't, I was approaching this to not try to make it a huge growth year for our department, given that we are still in the middle of creating a new facility and everything. So, it just couldn't fit within my directive budget, but it's a very valuable piece of equipment.
Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll, I'll take the, I'll be the council resource with the amendments that Counselor Johnston and myself have talked about.
If we go with the, this is the main motion, and then you amend with a secondary motion. So, can you do that, Glenn?
Understood what is being requested, and we'll do what we can to-
Thank you.
So, you'll get that motion plus you'll have an amendment to make. Where am I here? Just a second.
Page 78.
Yeah, I know, I just couldn't find the right piece of paper here. So, all right, next. Is, that's a Copeland, and this is a Mentorn. Smart, okay. So, be it ordered that the city council approve $32,000 in ongoing expense requested by supported entities to fund the membership with GP COG. Counselor Johnston, would you be willing to fund, make that motion?
I would love to, but no, not this budget cycle.
Not this budget cycle. Just a second, where am I? Okay, I'm back to Counselor Archer.
Yeah, it's just, one of the things we're doing, it's a yes, so-
Oh, it is a yes, okay.
But one of the things that this will do is, we're going to be losing our grant writer, it sounds like, and this is the service they provide?
Well, not, we're not losing grant-writing ability within our organization.
But we're losing the grant writer.
We, GP COG would offer assistance in making sure that if there are grants available for our community to apply for, they will make us aware of it, yes.
Yes. They also provide legal opinion sometimes?
They, they provide, no, MMA provides side legal opinion.
Any counselor can send an email to MMA Legal Services with a question, and they'll do a return email. I take a month, but they will do a return.
But they provide consolidation of services. They also provide training, and they provide cooperative purchasing. So, just saying that there is a value to this organization, and it could be greater than the cost we pay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer.
That supports making that motion, and we look forward to doing that Monday. Next up is, be it ordered approval reduction of $187,646 in ongoing revenue as requested by Planning and Economic Development to end use of the economic development funds for operations. Counselor Gay? Johnston. I'm sorry. I was at Johnston. Oh, okay, I'm at Johnston now? What? Just a second. I think I'm with you right now.
I thought you refused.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's how we ended up, okay. Counselor Johnston?
Call Roger.
Yeah, you're, very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Johnston?
Love to give you the good ones.
I know.
Yeah.
The luck of the draw. You're lucky we're not playing poker tonight.
I'll take it.
So, would you do that one?
Yes, you will. Thank you very much. Counselor Johnston will take that one. Counselor Archer is done, so Counselor Gay is, be it ordered that the city council reduce $49,025 in ongoing expense requested by Public Works to remove a, to remove a duplicate headcount.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Easy enough. And Counselor Gay would be the winner tonight in the poker game. So, be it ordered, I mean, yeah, be it ordered that Planning and Economic Development leveraged TIF funding to support the annual shuttle bus zoom increase of $25,000. Counselor Doyle?
I'm going to defer to the council liaison to the shuttle bus committee if he would like to.
I will take it.
You will take it, okay. Mentorn? So, Counselor Mentorn is going to do that one. I hope Counselor Gay will take this one, then. So, the city council will reduce $290,130 in outgoing expense as requested by the school board in their revised budget to fund flat insurance premiums. Counselor Doyle? Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
You'll take that one, all right. I don't know, I think Counselor Doyle will be a pretty good winner, too.
It's a stretch, Doyle.
Counselor Copeland is that one, and so, this one is, and we did Counselor Mentorn, so this one would be Counselor Smart, be it ordered that the city council reduce $9,973 in ongoing expenses requested by Public Works due to savings in capacity costing. Counselor Smart is there, ready to go. This one is probably going to be a double the mill rate or something. So, be it ordered that the city council reduce by $15,914 ongoing expense as requested by Public Works due to lower-than-estimated demand and usage fees from CMP. You'll take it.
I'll take it.
All right. Next up, so I think we've finally gotten everybody equal. Be it ordered that the city council approve $935 in ongoing expense as requested by Planning and Economic Development to fund a missed step COLA increase for Planning and Economic Development director. Counselor Archer?
Yeah, I'll take that.
You will take that one, thank you.
How do we miss, can I ask a question?
Please do, sir.
How do we miss a cost-of-living adjustment for, for a director?
Well, you know, I don't know.
At the time that this COLA goes out to everyone, I mean, how do we miss one person?
Because they came in after I had set the budget.
So, so that was Counselor Archer. So, next up is, be it ordered that the city council reduce $5,000 in ongoing expenses requested by Planning and Economic Development due to the chamber being paid out of TIFs. Counselor Gay?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Can, can I bring up something for discussion?
Please do, sir.
It won't be long, Mr. Mayor.
I'll go right ahead.
I just want to point out that yourself and Counselor Archer sit on the-
Yes, sir.
Chamber.
On a chamber board.
The Chamber Board.
Yes, sir.
And I know there was discussion about moving the chamber to a, a location here in Saco that would be free usage to them, and they turned down the free usage. The board turned down the free usage of a facility in our city, and yet, we're going to fund them at an increased level. I'm concerned about that.
So, let me just say, if, can I answer?
You can.
Okay, thank you.
Love to be answered.
So, all I can say there is that we're talking about ongoing chamber expenses. They have downsized in the size of their office, and Counselor Archer and I aren't the only two on the board. There are a broad, a large number, including members of the Bitterford Council that are on the board. And, and it seems there's some hesitance because the conflict that occurred under a previous executive director between the City of Saco and the, and the chambers' use of the train station, which is what you're talking about, is free, because it turned out it wasn't free. And so, they developed a number of expenses, and so, they're, we're going to work toward making them feel a little bit easier about the City of Saco and our offer, but that at this point, they, they have that hesitance from previous experience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, the folks that were in place at that time have all changed out, and I don't know why the Bitterford and Saco Joint Standing Committee hasn't gotten together in some time and had some good discussion about how to further collaborate as we did in the previous council. But also, I'm not a, I'm not a- But also, I'm not a, I'm, I'm not a businessman, per se, but, you know, if you can get rent for zero dollars versus paying for it, I think that's a good deal. So I'm very concerned about funding this ongoing when we could take this, this funding and put it to an organization that really is pushing Saco, like Saco Main Street, and maybe they could go out and bring in more development than they've already brought in. Or perhaps this money can go to economic development to help further the growth of our community. So I'm, I just want to put that out there, food for thought, and we can talk about it on Monday night.
Great observation. We'll talk about it once there's a motion on the floor on Monday to discuss that and see if it passes. But that, though, it appears as if there's no discussion on the joint standing committee meeting, there is discussion on a joint council meeting. So at that time, the seven counselors from Saco and the nine counselors from Biddeford can intermingle, and we can chat about that while we're being convivial to each other. So, so that's that one, and so do I, so, so I do have Counselor Gay. So next up is be it ordered the city council split EDC separate from SF, SMFA. This has no effect on the budget. So Counselor Doyle, are you willing to do that? Next up is be it ordered the city council realign the use of TIF funds as recommended by Planning and Economic Development Department. Counselor Copeland.
Yes, I'll take it.
Okay. And the next up is be it ordered the city council approve $7,000 in ongoing expenses requested by code enforcement to reflect the correct funding for the electrical inspector. Counselor Menthorn.
Sure.
Okay. Next up is be it ordered the city council approve $662 as requested by the Maine Municipal Association to fund a 2% increase. Counselor Smart.
I guess.
Yes, thank you. Be it ordered by the city council approve $179 in ongoing expense to fund the Saco Pathfinder's increase due to more snowmobiles registered, that is, 428 last year.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston does make that motion. Be it ordered the city council approve $2,000 in ongoing expense to fund Seeds of Hope's incremental request. Counselor Archer.
Yes.
So Counselor Archer, yes. Next up is be it ordered the city council approve $500 in ongoing expense at the request of the American Red Cross. Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Okay. Run a roll here. Be required, be it ordered that the city council approve $1,000 in ongoing expense at the request of Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association. Counselor Doyle.
$55,000.
Counselor Doyle will make that motion. Be it ordered that the city council approve $5,545 in ongoing expense requested by Caring Unlimited, which is the York County Domestic Violence Program. Counselor Copeland. So Counselor Copeland, yes. Be it ordered the city council approve $43,156 in ongoing expense and $2,305 in one-time expense as requested by Finance to make internal auditor full-time. So we're going, not just, so we have two there. Counselor Menthorn, would you take this motion?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn takes this motion. Excuse me. Be it ordered the city council approve three, I'm sorry, $30,364 in ongoing expenses requested by code enforcement to make the second code enforcement officer full-time. Excuse me. This ongoing expense is offset by $23,000 in anticipated incremental revenue related to additional inspections made possible by the position. Counselor Smart. So quickly, Mr. Lambert, is, is this, so David is full-time?
David's deputy director.
Yeah, so that's full-time.
He's full-time.
And then Dawn is full-time.
Dawn is full-time.
And then we have...
Irish Griffith.
And she's half-time, and this would make her full-time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, yeah, would you mind explaining why?
Yeah, we hired Irish in February of this year in cooperation with the town of Orchard Beach. We were just informed by the town that they, their budget committee has recommended not continuing with that position in that town, and we can certainly use her talents. She's a former Section 8 housing inspector out of Sanford, so...
Great, yeah, sounds good.
It would be a good way to initiate the multifamily housing program.
Excellent, thank you. Be it ordered by the city council approve $11,173 in ongoing expense to fund the updated TIF valuations. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Be it ordered by the city council approve $2,500 in ongoing expenses requested by Age Friendly Saco to fund a match grant or a grant match.
Mayor, that's my TIF.
Oh, that?
That was my submission.
That's your submission, Age Friendly Saco? So you want that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll acquiesce that, to that, and then, so the last one is be it ordered the city council increase slash decrease the blank department budget by blank.
It's the generic.
That's the generic one, so...
Now, Counselor Doyle, and I do have your $55,000 as of different line items that you had also requested. We didn't get it in.
So this is just advisory to the entire council on how to make a motion for something else.
Yeah, I, what's that? So we, and I, and Counselor Doyle, I did have staff prepare responses to each of those to give you more information about their thoughts on, on those changes. We just finished compiling it today, so I'll send this out first thing in the morning so you all have it.
Thank you.
And review it.
Okay, so it's 9:25. Do you have an administrative update? Are there any other comments that the council wishes to make? So Mr. Sutherland?
Just one thing. Today we signed the, we are, the City of Saco is now the owners of a parcel of land that previously was owned by the Sweetser. So we now have a location to put our Public Works facility.
Fantastic. That's it? And then council discussion and comment? Any comments to my right? Any to my left? Oh, so whole, whole tour of hands. So let's start with Counselor Menthorn, and then go to Counselor Copeland.
It's a shame most of the school people have left, but I want to say I participated in the selection of the Saco Middle School principal, and the superintendent, Dominic, tried a new process for that selection, and it worked exceptionally well. There were a couple innovative things he did that I think were absolutely incredible. I am really happy I participated in it. I think we've got an outstanding candidate for that position, and it was just, it was a breath of fresh air, in one sense, from having sat on the CK Byrne selection. The new process was just incredible, and we actually came up with some ideas kind of after the fact yesterday afternoon of how to take it to the next level. So we're going to see a lot of good things out of the schools when we have to select staff now.
Excellent, thank you very much, Counselor Menthorn, and Counselor Copeland.
I just have some, I don't actually know who to ask this, I guess Kevin. They're, well, he doesn't like when we ask school board questions to him. But I'm going to start somewhere.
It's fine, go ahead.
They're talking about a 10-year lease.
Yep.
With an option to buy. How, how, do you know what their authority is on this? How can we put our taxpayers, I realize that it could be rented, it could be this, with that. A 10-year lease is a long time. How can we ask our taxpayers to pay for that?
So by state statute, and I did a little research into this, so state statute for the Education Department allows them to go up to a 10-year lease for property.
Okay.
Now, the question becomes, okay, so this lease is apparently with the option to buy. So the buy part becomes a council authority. So if they were to buy, if they were to buy the property, the council would have to ultimately make that decision about buying the property.
In 10 years, Tom.
As is, as is written in our charter, or sooner if the council decides to purchase the property and buy it out of the lease.
The question to ask is how much are they going to pay prior to the actual purchase of the property? I'll leave that for you guys to figure out.
Say that again, I didn't hear.
Don't know.
The question is how much are they forking out?
I just suggest that the, the city council asks for an actual budget for this proposal because it hasn't been provided, and I've heard a lot of rumors. So I think that you probably should, it behooves of you to ask for those numbers.
Yeah, and they, they have them, so I, so they have the figures worked out, and that the superintendent or the chair of the school board is capable of, of answering that question. And it would be useful to ask it because when you look at that and the purchase price, which is another question that should be asked, should it become a purchase? What would the council, what number would the council be seeing is an important question to ask, even if it may be 10 years down the line. So it's worth paying attention to, or earlier, because, because the contract does allow...
The problem is, is as far as I understand, this agreement has already been signed.
Absolutely has.
So there's really no control anymore from our standpoint.
Well...
So we can, we can ask the questions, and I do suggest you, you ask for a budget because I would like to see it.
On the leasing side only.
Correct.
It is still a council question if it goes beyond the lease.
But the problem is that, that you, you've encumbered the city regardless of what budget you decided it's coming from for, for a 10-year period. So whether it's covered in this particular year, as I understand it, there are future years where you could be looking at a sizable impact, because we can't predict what subsidies or revenues are going to be in the future.
True.
And I, I know that you sat in that executive session, and not to put you on the spot, but maybe you have, I mean, it's, it's public now, so you could reveal those figures, because...
Just a minute. Mr. Sutherland, are the figures actually public? I know that the fact that lease was signed is certainly public. The lease document is public also, correct?
It would have to be.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't seen anything.
And you haven't seen it, but I have. Okay, so what my understanding is, is that we're talking about over a 10-year period spending about $3 million, and the purchase price, which is pretty startling all by itself, would be another $3 million.
For, for a building, as I understand, that is assessed for $770,000, so I suggest maybe the assessor go and reevaluate value there.
So, well, then, yeah, so that's right. I mean, certainly the assessor should hit the owner of the building with a, with an adjusted value to that structure. And I, but I really think that, that former counselor, Mr. Roach, was right on there when he was talking about 30 bucks a square foot. It seems a little high for Saco. Certainly, I think he pointed out, and I would like to agree with him, I wouldn't pay 30 bucks per square foot for about 80 building in Saco. But the school board looked at that as a, as an important addition to the pre-K program. The capacity of the building, I think, in terms of classrooms, and this is just off, out of recollection, is like 160 pre-K kids out of that structure.
Again, not to put you on the spot, but...
It surely makes the average cost, it will make the average cost per student rise up significantly.
They explored the other options, correct?
What's that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
They explored the other options, one being the original site.
They explored two original options, yeah.
That was Young School that this council last heard of, which apparently they decided was no longer an option because from what I've heard, the city wasn't willing to work with them, and I don't remember that being the case.
I don't...
I particularly remember, excuse me, that all we required was that they went through a planning process.
That, that's right, and I...
So, and then they explored the OA.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get to the point here.
Yes, sir.
And there were some figures with that, and then there was this very secretive other location that was discovered, which now, based on some figures I'm hearing, are much higher than the actual cost for the other two previous locations. Is that accurate?
Figures can lie, and liars can figure. So all I can say there is that there was a, an analysis done by the school department business manager that identified that it was actually, I think it was less expensive when you start throwing in the additional costs of moving to the OA center or the additional costs of classrooms going into the Young School.
In the, in the first year?
Yeah.
In that first year? But that was understood previously, that the first year at Young School or OA would have construction costs that were higher than...
Certainly some of these expenses are one-time expenses.
Right, as in subsequent years it would have been less.
But that was the analysis that the school board saw. And, and you're right, the school board did, there were, are members of the school board who felt that they were being off-put by the, by the council. So, any questions there or comments? Counselor Menthorn?
Like I said, I just would like to see the actual figures.
I believe that I can get them to you, right, Mr. Sutherland? Am I dealing with, do I need to talk to the city solicitor on whether I can release this stuff?
Did they come out of executive session and vote on the document?
They came out?
Or vote, gave, gave approval for the...
They gave approval.
Then yes, you may share those documents.
Okay, because these are supporting documents to the approval that they made, so...
Yes.
I don't need a comment from the city solicitor to do that. So the answer is, yes, sir. I'll, I'll see about getting that to Torrey for distribution. Counselor Menthorn, excuse me.
As I recall, having read Dominic's memo, part of the reason they were excited about this location is the building is pretty much already outfitted with turnkey chairs, everything. So a lot of the expenses they would have had going into OA or even outfitting at the site at Young, you still would have had to outfit all those classrooms, and this way they're buying it lock, stock, and barrel, so to speak, with their lease.
Not just that, but some of the, for example, the feeding associated with these kids.
Right.
Apparently, this is a really quality kitchen already in existence, and there's real benefit with that, and that it comes with all of the tables and chairs and little balls or toys or whatever that...
The playground's already done, it's designed for this age group and all that kind of thing.
And, and of course, the easy access and egress apparently on the industrial park, so that's true. So any other questions to my left or comments to my left? To my right? Are there any additional council discussion comments to my right, to my left? Is there any objection to adjourning? To my left, to my right? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Well, not bad, see, still... So how was that, okay? The meeting? Look at it, it's 9:30.
It's illegal on our side of the
And not get up to thirty bucks a square foot. Well, I'm happy to be done.
Do you have any idea where this building is? Nobody came and checked with us? Who checked with you? They did either. Yeah, yeah.
I already
I didn't know that was even for lease because, well, I didn't, what building is it?
That's what I was wondering. That's the only thing I can think of that's big enough.
I'm wondering, do they have more than eight classrooms?
Let's never know that.
We just heard from, we just heard
I don't know what's
They spent six million dollars. They haven't even approved pre-K yet.
Well, she just said it. You can't have
Well, no, 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 the owner stayed, no, no.
Right, the covenant.
Which means, which means
But if the school's not being owned
The building may thought that
But if it's being leased and they're not owning it, does that change it?
Well, then it's still a
Okay.
So they can't be there?
Oh, yeah, it can be there.
Should they be buying it?
No, wait a minute.
Oh, yeah, it can be there because they have to pay taxes, but guess who's going to pay it?
But you probably
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a private property, it's a private city property for a school when you can't
How you doing?
Well, yourself?
Kevin mentioned to you that
This hasn't been?
Oh, it has been. We have a meeting. It's just, we do it on, we're working our way through the whole city.
Oh, okay.
We were in there the other night.
Leasing is different.
We're working our way through finance right now. We just ripped out a piece of there, pulled downstairs, we're doing a whole ergonomic thing.
Oh, yeah, right.
We have a, we have a
I think it's
We're in it, oh, yeah, we're right deep in the middle of it with everything in the local place.
You gotta make it worth
Yep. We are catching up, we just keep, damn buildings keep getting older.
It's there what we've got, and they're beautiful, I think.
Oh, you're not, you're going to fight me on that because I love these buildings.
Yeah.
I've been working them for too many years to not like them. I love calling to them.
I think all the staff for being here.
How about
I'm surprised Kevin Sutherland, I mean, Kevin Roach keeps going down.
Well, I said to him yesterday when we found
That was not mine. It's probably
We've been neglecting hands too long, remembering our life safety.
Hey, whatever. I just think about them.
It's a positive fact.
So